All right, well, welcome to the January 10th Planning Commission meeting. Happy New Year, everybody, 2018. So Jackie, would you like to perform?
Yes.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
President.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Thank you, Jackie. So the next is approval of the agenda. Were there any amendments or edits to the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Were there any other edits? No? Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the December 13th, 2017 Planning Commission minutes. Were there any edits, changes to these minutes?
I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So next on the agenda is presentation on the future development of the old public worksite. And Carrie, can you introduce us or introduce the...
I will, certainly. Thank you, Chair members of the Planning Commission. At your last meeting, you had expressed some concerns, interest over the development of the old public worksite. So we have invited Bill Nuenendorf. I believe City Manager Scott Neal is back there also, and Katie Clark Seben to give us a little background on the development. This sketch plan will be coming forward in the near future, potentially at your next meeting. So with that, I'll introduce Mr. Nuenendorf.
Great. Thank you very much. Bill Nuenendorf, the city's Economic Development Manager. Glad for the opportunity to be here this evening. What we have for you tonight is a brief history of the planning efforts in the Grandview District. To some of you, this will be new information, and to some of you, it will be a refresher. But in the weeks ahead, we expect to have a sketch plan submittal on your agenda, also on the City Council agenda, about the city's former public worksite at 5146 Eden Avenue. And while a lot of folks have been very familiar with this project, we recognize that a lot of Planning Commissioners weren't here 10 years ago when we started these conversations. So we thought it'd be helpful to run quickly through some of the efforts that we've done to date. Happy to answer any questions along the way as well. So the first thing I wanted to recognize is just that the Grandview District, the area basically from City Hall on the east to the Vernon Avenue apartment, or to the apartments and other commercial buildings along Vernon to the west, is an area, it's a neighborhood with a long history. Originally, if you look at how some of the roads were laid out, those were the original mill roads. Eden Avenue was originally called Eden Prairie Road, because that's the only way to get to Eden Prairie. Interlochen, back in the day, was called Hopkins Road, because that was the only way to get to Hopkins, when they were unpaved gravel or log roads. We've come a long way over the last 100 years. In the image on the right hand of the screen, that is in the mid-1950s, when the intersection of Vernon and what is now Highway 100 was a much simpler intersection. Vernon Avenue was a state highway. It was State 169, because what we know of as 169 today did not exist. It ran through here in Adana. You see some of the current buildings. The McGreevy Funeral Home was originally Cedric's Restaurant. The Perkins there today was originally a nursery, not a daycare, but a place where they sold trees. You see the big oak groves, one of the native oak in the area, right now, that's an on-ramp, the big curvy on-ramp. But also, something very important to recognize is the neighborhoods to the northeast and the northwest have been here since about the 1930s. So they've grown over time. So while the transportation network has changed quite a bit, it's interesting to look at how this whole area has changed from decade to decade. In fact, on our website and actually on the Adana Historical Society, there's aerial photos about every 10 to 15 years. We were able to pull up old aerial photos to see how the area changed. It's kind of fascinating, but I don't want to go that far back in history tonight. The Grandview District is also unique, because it's one of the areas where the city has made proactive efforts. Going back to the early 1980s, this was the city's second tax increment financing district. That district was first created in 1984 with the intention of redeveloping some of the older industrial properties. Those older properties were assembled and eventually razed and rebuilt and reborn as a Grandview Square condominiums, as the Class A Grandview Square office building, as the Hennepin County Library, a park, and the city's senior center. Those proactive efforts also went on in 2008, when the city made a difficult decision that it was time to relocate and expand the Public Works Department. They had been operating in their old property just down the road here on Eden since 1962. And over the decades, their trucks got bigger, the city got bigger, the needs got bigger, the staff got bigger, and it was time to move to a bigger facility that could actually accommodate a modern operation like we have with our streets and water departments. So in 2008, a new site was purchased. The original intention was to sell this old site to help pay for the new one, but through a number of conversations back in 2008, it was decided to delay any sale of the property to consider other uses for it, including a potential public use. And with that, 2008, with that decision, that set off our 10-year conversation about what should we do with the old public worksite. Over the years, there have been a number of different community advisory teams. The first one was convened in 2009, and that work ultimately culminated in the Small Area Guide Report that went to the Planning Commission, your predecessors, and the City Council. Most importantly, they settled upon seven guiding principles. And essentially, the main theme of the principles was that this area is special. We don't want to just do business as usual. We shouldn't just accept anybody that walks off the street and wants to do a new project. We should be more strategic and more long-term focused. So the seven guiding principles, I'm not going to read through all of them, but a couple highlights. It was recognized that there were several publicly owned parcels, the old school bus site, the old public worksite, a lot of the MinDOT parcels and side parcels by the highway. And it was the goal that we could leverage those publicly owned assets to create a vibrant and connected district. Throughout many of the planning conversations, themes came up about how disconnected the network is, that once you get there, for example, at Jerry's Foods, you're there, but it's difficult to get to the library, even though it's across the street. When you're in the gas station, it's difficult to get to the next place, because there's a lack of sidewalks, bike paths, et cetera. So one of the goals was to make a vibrant and connected community. We also focused on the fact that the area is, it's at odds in the fact that it serves the neighbors, it's a neighborhood center, but it's right on the highway. So it sees a lot of traffic, not necessarily on the local roads, but there's these regional connections, but ultimately, the desire is to keep it as more of a neighborhood center, not to compete with Southdale, or to compete with the Mall of America, or those types of things. And the third one that I'll focus on now is number three here, and that's to turn perceived barriers into opportunities. So there was a lot of conversation back in the early years about the railroad tracks. Is it a barrier? Is it something that is preventing us from being incredible here? Or is it an opportunity that we can turn around? The same with the public worksite, which from one perspective is a 35-foot hole in the ground. From another perspective, it's a great opportunity to do something good. So these seven guiding principles have endured over several rounds of conversation and planning. That initial effort also led to a planning grant from the Metropolitan Council. And with that effort, we got a little bit more professional, hired consultants, hired some advisors, and also convened our second community advisory team. That was a group of about 50 people, all volunteers from the community. It was led by our planning commissioners at the time. And that was another close to two-year effort of more public meetings, more drawings, more sketches. Those 50-some folks broke down into smaller teams to focus on specific aspects. Some looked at transportation networks. Some looked at land use. Some looked at the public realm, whether it be sidewalks or civic facilities. And ultimately, they came together and worked on, all right, they didn't work on, they completed the development framework. So this ultimately was approved, went through the Planning Commission, went through the City Council in April of 2012. And with that effort, we originally hoped to call it a small area plan, but ultimately, after all these meetings, we found that the folks could agree on a lot of things, but we couldn't reach agreement on height or density. And so those are the two things that you'll find noticeably missing from this, and that's why we called it a framework rather than a small area plan. And it's my understanding that this year, we're going to finish that small area plan and finish those two big questions about height and density. So when the framework was finished, then staff got to work starting to implement it. We knew in general where we wanted to go. We knew that the city had a vacant parcel. We knew that the school district wanted to get a new facility for their bus garages. And so in 2013, the city issued a request for interest, an RFI for developers, recognizing that we didn't want to do this on our own. We wanted the expertise from the outside development community, but we weren't ready to sell the land. We weren't ready to put a stake in the ground and just take a check. We wanted to be a true stakeholder and a true partner in that. At the same time, the school district started their conversations, what to do with their property? Do they sell? Do they move? Where could they move? Could they get financing? Lots of various questions. In 2016, that was another big planning year. We created the Grandview Number Two Tax Increment District, recognizing that we were on the cusp of having some great things happen. And in our framework, we have pages and pages of wishes, sidewalks, intersections, crossings, waters, and sewer lines that are the right size for the future. And that's a lot of cost. So we recognized that a tax increment financing district would be the right tool to help pay for some of that infrastructure. So that's some of the key things to date. What I wanted to focus on next was that 2013 and 2014 RFI, where the city reached out to the development community to see if we can find a good partner to work with. It was not hard to find good potential partners. There was a lot of developers very interested in building in this part of Adana. And ultimately, we did a fair amount of advertising and promotion, and ended up with 10 different developers that wanted to be our partners, and put proposals together, put packets together. There is no price tag associated with any of these, because our goal wasn't just to sell the property, but it was to find the right partner and find the right thing to build on this property. From that group of 10, we selected four different finalists to interview. Doran Companies, Fraunshue, Greco, and Kraus Anderson were those four finalists. The City Council and a group of other folks, including some, but not all, the Plan Commissioners, met in an interview in an open setting and heard their pitch, and saw what they had in mind, and looked at their strengths. And ultimately, the City Council selected Fraunshue as their potential development partner. And Fraunshue was joined by a team of different architects, land planners, they had a contractor to help inform us about construction costs and some of those practical things. And then we kicked off about another two-year process, looking, we called it the collaborative development planning, because we knew that we wanted ultimately not just to plan, we wanted actually to get something built on there. And this really kicked off a whole nother firestorm of public meetings, online surveys, newspaper articles. We did like community comments. We had open houses. I reached out to 120 different community groups in Adana. I didn't even know Adana had 120 different community groups. We talked to PTA-type groups. We reached out to the Boy Scouts, all the different sports leagues, the theater groups, to see what, you know, we've got a couple acres here, what can we do? So we amassed a great deal of suggestions, comments, and some concerns. That effort culminated in 2015, where we settled upon a concept to consider building a community arts and culture center. It was about 70,000 square feet, so a pretty good-sized building. By comparison, the City Hall is about 20,000 square feet, if you take the City Hall plus the police station. So it was three times larger than this facility. And then that would have been on about half of the property. The other half of the property would have been multifamily housing, apartments. And the general concept was that if we sold a part of the property to a private developer, we could use that money to help pay for part of this public facility. So that went through another process, and then ultimately, the city wanted to look at the cost on our own. 70,000 square feet, that's a big building. It's an expensive building. It could be an awesome building. But we engaged the architects at HGA to further refine what this 70,000-square-foot building looks like, who it serves, what things happened there. We engaged a group called Proz Consulting to do a market analysis and cost study. What does it take to run, staff, and maintain a building of this size? And ultimately, in 2016, the estimated price tag had risen to about $45 million. And that was determined shortly after the school district had gained approval for their referendum, for the big investment in our schools, which is a really positive thing for the community. But at the time, the City Council decided that it wasn't the right time to take any action. $45 million was a lot of money. It was a community center that some people really were excited about, but not everyone could support. So since 2016, we've had to let things cool down a little bit and let things shake out. I included a few images in the packet of some of the different options that we considered. I think my recollection is that we ultimately had nine different options. We started off with three, tested that with public meetings. People tended to like one or two of those. So we came back a month later with a few more options going in that direction. But we considered a mixture of uses, civic buildings, residential, office, commercial, indoor space, outdoor space. Ultimately, in 2016, in addition to these images, we also considered the option of putting only public uses on the site. And that would be a combination of indoor space and outdoor space. So we tested a lot of different designs, but ultimately, that effort yielded no decision. At about the same time, we still wanted to make progress on a lot of the other goals for this area, so we worked on a district-wide transportation study. The professionals at LHB headed up a team that was truly a national effort. Nelson Nygaard out of San Francisco. Alta Planning is one of the recognized bicycle and pedestrian planning teams in the nation. So they came together, because again, this wasn't just your normal district. We didn't want to look at it from the same lens as every other project had been looked at. We really wanted to focus on how this place could be special, whether you arrive here by car, by bus, on foot, or by bicycle. So we worked on that study and also tested traffic impacts. What happens if we do build a giant community center? There's a lot of traffic that's associated. What happens if we don't? What happens if it goes residential? What happens if it goes commercial? So the transportation study gives us a lot of different guidance and input about what various consequences are if we take different actions. And then one of the other more recent studies, in a way unrelated to those, but still interconnected, is the Grandview Green, that concept of building a covered lid over a part of Highway 100. And that initial comment or concept goes back to 2009, that very first community advisory team. One of the main problems that was identified was just the difficulty in having people get across the highway. Very easy to cross if you're in a car or a truck, more difficult if you're on foot or if you're on a bicycle. And I believe a few months ago, one of our consultants, Katie Clark Seben, had given you an update on that Grandview Green concept. So that's still a work in progress. But from a staff perspective, we see all these various studies coming together to help make an informed decision on how to proceed. Just about a month ago, our City Council made a decision that it's time to keep moving, that it's time to pick up those pieces and see if we can re-weave a project that makes sense and is financeable and supportable. And so the City Council executed an agreement to continue that relationship with Fraunshue, to be informed by all the work to date, from the 2009 study to the 2011 study, and the 2015 study, and the 2017 studies. And the goal, the direction, was to come up with a site design that is not only informed by these decisions, but makes progress, makes tangible progress. There was five key elements that seemed to rise to the surface after all these years of conversation. While not very glamorous, this concept of district shared parking is still a good concept for the site. Rather than having five different property owners do five separate parking lots, we thought, can we have people work together? It's worked before for us. It's worked very well for us. Let's keep that as a fundamental. Housing continues to be a hot topic, as you'll hear later tonight. You've heard months, every meeting for the last several months. The City Council is committed to seeing not just market rate, but affordable housing, including on this site. So if there is housing, they want to make sure there's a combination of both. And one of the other challenges that the city faces is the cost of maintaining and improving our aging art center. It's a good operation in an older building that is kind of hidden, and so one of the goals is to create a new home for that, that allows it to springboard to success in the future. And the fourth element was kind of a fun one, food. When we did all the public outreach back in 2012 and so on, people wanted a place to have a cup of coffee, have a meal, have lunch, meet their friends, hang out, be social, meet their parents, hang out with their kids, meet their buddies or neighbors. And so one of the other ideas here for this site is to incorporate a unique marketplace, maybe a food hall, could be a restaurant, but something, again, not just like the same normal thing. So with that in mind, the City Council did engage Fraunshue about a month ago. Since that time, we've been meeting with them every couple weeks to put some ideas together. And in the near future, we're going to be going public with those. So we've scheduled a community open house, reaching out to all the hundreds of people that have already shown interest in Grandview, reaching out to that, we've got a core group of about 90 people that have been involved since day one. We call them our Grandview alumni. There's a couple alumni in the room here. Reached out to those, to have them come to that open house. And in the 24th, your second meeting in January, the Planning Commission will see the sketch plan. Fraunshue has engaged DJR architects to work on that, so that will be coming forward. Then they'll go to City Council in February. And based on that first round of input, the City Council will then make a decision, is this it? Is it time to go forward? Is it time to make a decision and do something or not? There's, there are options in front of us. We don't have to sell the property. We don't have to build on the property. We don't have to build a public facility. But boy, 2018 seems like it's the right year to make a big investment for this community. So we hope it can be a good one. If this goes forward, one of the deadlines that we're looking at is the deadline by the Metropolitan Council for comprehensive plan amendments and site plan amendments. So if we proceed, we'll probably come back in May, actually, April or May, to see if we can get that final approval and get something going. So that's, in 20 minutes, that's some history. That's where we are today, and I think where we're going to go in the future. I can't predict what the shape of the thing is, or what the actual uses are, or what the cost is, but with your input, with the community's input, with direction from our elected officials, we hope to figure that out. So that's what I have for you, and I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Bill. Do you have questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Nuenendorf. That was very good. The bus garage site, which I believe is, was that a Trammell building that's going on?
Correct. Trammell Crow got that project.
Does that, is that, I mean, that's housing. I mean, is that, does that change what you might want to do or would be needed on the public worksite? I mean, is that a different housing market that they're tapping there?
Good, very good question. So I don't know tonight. We have hired a market researcher to look into that market demand. There's been so much housing built in Adana. There's more on our plate, on deck, whether it's a single-family house or apartments, maybe condominiums, those might be coming back. Different folks told me that at this point in time, there's still strong demand for housing, especially in first-ring suburbs like Adana, especially in good locations with very good school districts. And some of that housing demand is generated by seniors downsizing, some by baby boomers, and some by younger people moving up to their first home, apartment, condo, or whatever. So there seems to be strong demand, but that is a question that we thought it'd be wise to hire a market consultant to actually give us a little bit more informed decision. Since the city owns this property, we want to make a smart decision.
If I could add to the Trammell Crow project, that's a senior project with services. So whether that would be the use that Fraunshue is considering, not likely.
Sorry, any other questions? Commissioner Hobbs.
In the presentation, you talked about with the lid, you found no fatal flaws at this point. What constitutes a fatal flaw? I mean, is that from an engineering standpoint or a cost standpoint?
It could be any number of things. In my mind, a fatal flaw is something that prohibits us from moving forward. When we met with MinDOT, if they would have said, "No way in heck," and stomped out of the room, that's a fatal flaw. If the United States DOT said, "No, these are terrorist attractions," or something like that, and we're not going to allow these, that's a fatal flaw. If the thing doesn't pay for itself, or doesn't have the potential to generate enough revenue to pay for itself, to me, that's a fatal flaw. So those are three big ones. There's thousands of other smaller ones. But so far with that project, I mean, we've continued to meet with MinDOT officials every couple weeks to see what this looks like and how it might work. And so far, those conversations are still ongoing. So with that project, we expect to come back to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority in March and give them an update of what we've learned. So we've had public input, we've had technical input, we're getting market input, we're getting engineering input. So we'll bring that together in March and then have a conversation about, is this the right time to move forward with that type of planning? Is it time to move forward with that type of construction? So we're still a few months away from that answer.
All right. Thanks.
Commissioner Lee.
Bill, thank you for coming to the meeting. I know that you're here today because at the end of last year, our Planning Commission was informed that Grandview was going to pick up again. So we are all very cognizant of the fact that that property has sat empty, but for good reason, and that there was an extensive public engagement, involvement process. One question, obviously, and I'm still thinking that, because obviously, now we're doing small area plans, and we're always looking at, how are we incorporating the public input? And then, how can we assure that the plan reflects the public input? You have summarized that there has been a process that preceded this. I was wondering if it might not be a good idea to actually summarize what that public input was. I don't know if that means reviving previous documentation, but as a starting point, that would be really helpful to know. would be really helpful to know. I was made aware of the fact that actually, more than half of the public input at that point did not want housing on this site. May or may not be true, but I really can't respond to it. So some of those things, I think, will make a difference as to what is being proposed as you go forward. The food hall idea does appear to be a great one, but again, can it be substantiated with public input? Saying you want to have a cafe or someplace to eat doesn't necessarily translate into a food hall, which I'm, so I'm just a little concerned about how some things were interpreted. So again, it goes kind of back to revisiting, what were those tenants or parameters that were last established? I do recall attending that last meeting where there were like three scenarios, and to me, there were mostly massing studies, kind of looking at if we put three levels of this and parking here, what would it look like? So I think that, at least in my mind, is sort of how things were left. My understanding was that there wasn't a conclusion or at least a strong preference, and so things were tabled. But as we pick it up, I think it'd be really important to understand what were the factors that were, that we couldn't reach agreement? Was it height? Was it density? So now if we are being asked to review a proposal by the developer, it would be good to know so that we could kind of view it in light of that. Moving forward, is Fraunshu going to be the developer? Is that a set thing? I think I heard you say that, no, actually, if there were, none of these plans generate sort of what the city feels it needs, really don't need to accept them? Is that still the understanding, or did I not get that right?
Yeah, so two questions. So in response to your first one, we're happy to provide more information as this project moves forward. There was so much input over the years that were collected, and there were strong opinions across the spectrum. Some people loved housing, some people hated housing, some people loved green space, others didn't think this was the right place for green space. So there's, those opinions are all over, but we're happy to put a summary together for the next, for the next presentation.
I might actually suggest that that go up on the website. I know there's probably a Grand View page, but if this is really starting up again, I think it's important to establish sort of a base of understanding. Ah, got it now, 2018, so this is where we started from. Where we start from is what came before, and I know it's a long process, but it'd be important for everyone, particularly our residents, to understand, why are we picking it up now and how does this continue on?
If you go to adina.gov/GrandView, you go to the Grand View page, and there's four tabs, one of which is called Planning for Change, which was one of the titles of the 2012 chapters. And there's a brief history. We didn't include the meeting notes from every, you know, dozens and dozens of meetings, but we included all the major milestones, all the key pieces are on that page. And so that's out there already. We can probably supplement it with some additional things.
Yeah, some documentation on statistics and numbers, and even if it's shown un conclusive, it'd be important to see that.
We'll see if we can get some of that up. And then in response to your second question about Fraunshu, at this point, the city has an agreement to work together to explore options. If the city council likes the options and if that makes sense, I would have to think that they'll want to work together. If they come to a conclusion that the options aren't making sense or the financials aren't making sense, there's no obligation that we have to do anything, frankly, or that we have to work with the Fraunshu company. But this point, at this point in time, based on our past experience, based on our current experience, the agreements are assuming that we can find a way to work together, but there's no obligation.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I recall at the last time, it was Fraunshu was on board also who proposed the, I want to say, three options. There was something known as a walkaway clause, because I know there was concern at the time about taking a path of, should the city hire an architect consultant or design team to flesh out some concepts? Or should the city work with the developer? The city chose to go with the developer because the developer had their own architects on team, and so it was kind of a, well, you know, we get it all wrapped up in the deal. But to assure the public at that time that, don't worry, we understand the architects are hired by the developers, but they're not working for the developers, they have to produce something that we as a city would also like. So there's a, there's a little nuance there. If you, if the city hires the architect team, design consultant themselves, there's no question about they're going to have to put forth stuff that the city approves. When the architect is part of the developer's team, they have to please the developer, as well as the city, but we kind of see that two-headed top there. So I believe there was something in the contract that assured, well, in the end, there was sort of this walkaway clause. Do you recall what that was and what was, how did that work?
So in the 2014 agreement with Fraunshu, when the city interviewed the 10 different development teams, we also interviewed the designers, the site planners, the landscape architects, and the architects. And one of my collections on, or recollections on why the council selected the Fraunshu team was based on the team. They liked what they saw, they liked the group of people that came together. And in that agreement, there was, I've never referred to it as a walkaway clause, but there was certainly an agreement that the city would pay for our costs, our out-of-pocket costs, the developers would pay for their out-of-pocket costs. But if the city, if the city did, took some steps that hurt the developer, like if we took the designs and walked away to a different developer, we would agree to reimburse them for stabbing them in the back, basically. There is another clause that if the city failed to make a decision in a timely fashion, the city would pay a portion of those architectural fees. And that's ultimately what happened. At the end of the day, we couldn't make a decision in time, the Fraunshu company was generous, they actually extended another year, saying if you can make a decision in another year, we'll waive your fees and we'll eat that cost. But back, that would have been 20, late 2016, the city council decided that it wasn't the right time to rush something through.
And so how did we end up with this, going forward with Fraunshu now, this, another RFI did not go out, or RFP did it?
It did not. And staff, consider that. We've been taking public input and planning for 10 years. We could do RFPs until the day that we all no longer walk this earth. But in the last, last year, we, staff has gotten a number of calls from developers that are interested in working on this site. It's time in the market, if something wants to get built, this is a great time to do it. And ultimately, again, the city council decided that we have an agreement with Fraunshu, they abided by all the terms of their agreement. They actually came in with some different team members. They decided to use DJR architecture, which, back in the 2014, 2015 era, when we hit a couple rough patches, trying to come up with a plan, we were getting close to coming up with a plan that a lot of people liked, and we needed to rough outs, or we needed to smooth out some rough edges, the city asked DJR to come in on our behalf and rough, and smooth those out. So for this latest effort, Fraunshu engaged with DJR directly. And again, I think when the city council made this award, part of that agreement includes the team that's, that's working on this, so.
So I guess I'll just ask this last question, then I'll let my other commissioners speak. I might have a few other thoughts. But the city did incur some, some cost to Fraunshu because they, we did not actually move forward with that developer the last round, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so this, this time round, it's a whole new contract. It isn't tied to previously what happened, or it isn't a way of getting out of the fees that would have been due. There was no kind of agreement that was made to use this particular developer.
Yep, so the agreement is online, you're happy to review it, but no, it's a clean break. I mean, three years ago, the city lost, the city spent some money, Fraunshu spent some money, different architectural teams spent some money, nothing got built from that. But with this contract, we're starting from a fresh point moving forward.
And with it being held by the HRA now, is there any requirement that there needs to be a public vetting process or a public review process? It's slightly different when it's the HRA, so if you could explain that a little more, I know it's the same members of the city council, but it's the Housing Redevelopment Authority.
Yeah, I wasn't prepared for that question, so I don't have a full answer, but, but yes, there are slight changes in state law that governs city council action versus HRA action. It's really in regards to the sale. So from a zoning and planning perspective, if the site needs to be rezoned, all those public procedures are exactly the same. Doesn't matter if a public entity owns it, private person owns it, that makes no difference. So all that public process is the same. When it comes to the final decision to sell a piece of property, whether you are a council or an HRA, you still have to have the public hearings, you still have to do those, those things. So from a public lens, we'll still be doing the same steps, but working as, through the HRA, we have a little bit greater latitude about how we, how we work and how we work out the financing of it, but that does not change the public process.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else down here? I just have a couple questions. So the marketing study that you mentioned, there's another one being performed, will we see the results of that before the sketch plan, or is that?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know if it'll be complete. It will be complete next week, I don't know if it'll be public next week. So this is regarding the sale of real estate. So usually when the city or the HRA owns a property, some details we keep close to our vest while we negotiate deal terms. So that is in process, but I don't know exactly when it'll be public.
All right, well, so is that also, is that, that study looking at what the uses, what uses are on the site? Is that what you were saying?
That is.
Updating, or is that a different study? I know, I know we've got the old one, so this new one isn't also looking at what are the highest and best uses now?
Yeah, so the, I apologize, I don't have the contract about what exactly they're looking at in this market study, but there's two key things that stand out in my mind. And that is the impact of new housing on the city's or HRA's property in light of all the other new housing in the area. We don't want to cannibalize and approve a project here that then hurts five other projects that we just approved within, you know, two miles or so. So that's one concern. And the other one is a food hall concept. It all sounds good in theory, but there was just another story today about all the restaurants that closed last year, the story didn't mention all the awesome restaurants that opened last year. But food is, is a, the food hall in particular, that's kind of a nebulous item. So if the city wants to be serious about some kind of community marketplace like that, I'd like to have some outside expertise about whether or not that's viable. Is it private? Is it public? Does it pay for itself? So those are the two, two particular issues we ask the market consultant to look at.
Okay, but we probably, we won't see those results in time for the sketch plan, most likely.
Probably not.
Okay. And then this is just probably a question for you, Carrie, just to remind us, where is the small area plan for Grand View? What's the status of that? And when will we know?
Yeah, so it's part of the comprehensive plan, likely to happen summer, fall time range. But as Mr. Nuendorf mentioned, we have all of these documents that have been done. We want to still use those, but there will be an additional step to put together those things that we haven't settled on, like the height.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Commissioner M. Roth.
Thanks, Bill. So just, just to follow up on one of Chair Olson's questions, and that was, so you're, on January 22nd, you're going to be having a community open house, and January 24th, you can come back and have a site concept. And I assume that the site concept is going to include, is going to address some of the issues that you have in your site design slide, which includes district parking, affordable housing, market rate housing, the art center and the food hall. Do you feel that you, you know, it sounds like you're farther away, for example, on resolution of where you are with the food hall. On some of those items, are you feeling that you're closer to, yeah, we kind of know what we want to present at the city community meeting, like the art center? Do you feel pretty good about what, where you want to go with that?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, the council gave very clear direction what the five elements they feel are supportable and fundable. So the, the design team at DJR has been putting together various concepts of that. Again, remember, this is sketch plan, so you're going to see something that is, it's more than a massing study, but it's far from the end product. But as we start to weave these pieces together, I think there's two things that I'm looking at or most concerned about. One, what's a planning impact? Is it a good plan? Is it a good site plan? How is traffic impacted, et cetera? The other piece that we'll have to run through the HRA and the city council is, does this make financial sense? I mean, whenever there's a new public facility, that costs money, and it's not dollars, it's millions of dollars, or potentially tens of millions of dollars. Those are big decisions. It has to pass muster on both, on both scales. The information that we presented at the open house on the 22nd is the same information that your team is going to see. I think your packet goes out Fridays? Yeah, so that information will be out on Friday, we have the open house on Monday, and are back here with you on Wednesday, and then a city council a week or two later. So it's the same information we're presenting, and again, we're presenting it in the interest of providing the information, but more importantly, recognizing that that's another starting point. We want to hear from, from, from the planning commission, from the neighbors, from the Grand View alumni, from the other residents and business owners in town that have had a long vested interest and have long been part of this conversation. So what we share on that night isn't the final thing, and it's a, it's a yes or a no answer, it's a starting point about, is this the right direction? Can this work? And how can we make it better?
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Quick one? Okay.
All right, I just had one more, a couple more follow-up things. My greatest concern is that what, what comes forth needs to match the framework. I know that it's stated in your PowerPoint that it does, but that is just a statement. Again, show that, put it on the website. What are, what are these, the elements of these five or four things that council has decided they want as part of this? How does that match the framework? I think the food hall thing is, is something that's going to feel as though it had no public vetting. I'm just trying to be frank here. Also, it's problematic that we don't know the financials and we're getting a sketch plan in front of us. I think that will be problematic public-wise as well. If you're saying that the reason the city's pitching this is because financially it feels like the right thing to do, and we don't even have any public, prior public support of it, we certainly have to have the evidence that there's a reason why they sense that. So whatever you can do before that January 22nd date or first date, need to address that. And then it feels very much like the timeline has been set. With Carrie saying that we don't even expect to get the Grand View report till fall, what's driving this? There's, that's going to be a question that will, the public will ask. What's driving that now? And the timeline you have set for us doesn't allow for much public input. I get it that there will probably be a public spot to speak at the city council meeting, I'm guessing. But again, there's no time there to react to it, and we always want to leave some time that shows, okay, we heard you, and here's why we can or can't do anything about that at this point. So I'll just leave you with that, but thank you very much for this update.
Great, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, so next on the agenda is a sketch plan review for 3650 Hazelton Road, Hazelton Road Apartments.
Community comment would be next.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I skipped over that. So the next item is community comment. Is there anyone here from the community who would like to speak? If you do have anything, you get to speak for three minutes. Is there nobody here? Is there nobody here? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the sketch plan review for 3650 Hazelton Road, Hazelton Road Apartments. And Carrie will give the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. Before you, we do have another sketch plan review. This property is located in the heart of the Greater Southdale Area District. It's located south of the Galleria and Southdale itself, and in between France and York, as indicated in red on the screen. It's just west of Target, across the promenade, and north of the Think Bank. It's the Guitar Center site. Property is about, oh, a little over an acre in size. Property's Zone PCD III, Plan Commercial District, as highlighted here. The purple to the south, that's the 71 France project. That's, that includes Think Bank and the apartments and the Byerlys. The site is guided in our comprehensive plan for mixed use. It's the MXC Mixed Use Center, establishes a maximum height of eight stories and maximum density of 100 units per acre. Within our framework vision plan, the site is suggested for mixed use as guided in the comprehensive plan with an emphasis on housing. So what the applicant is proposing is housing. It's a 17-story, 170-unit residential tower. The applicant hasn't decided specifically yet whether it would be condo or rental. But you can see on the, the base of the building would include units that face the promenade, kind of that podium style that we talk about. There would be public space along the Hazelton roadside. You can see that, that leads to the promenade. Another angle from the south, across Think Bank. Access to the site would be off Hazelton, off the roundabout. All of the parking here would be underground and enclosed, kind of, kind of behind that, that plinth or that base. Here's a visual look. So above the parking, they're proposing an amenity deck with a pool. Truck loading would be in the back and pretty well screened there. Here's that auto court for access, where you would access into the underground and enclosed parking. There would be a trail east-west connection to the promenade along the north lot line. As with a lot of developments that we're seeing in the Greater Southdale Area, we've asked our planning consultant, Mick Johnson, who's been involved with those principles, to take a look at the project through the eyes of the Southdale Work Group. That memo was included in your packet. You can see that he did have a lot of very positive comments to make about the, about the site. Did have a number of suggestions, and I'll just quickly highlight them. He had suggested potentially pulling the sidewalk off of Hazelton and adding landscaping in this area, kind of a more meandering sidewalk. He had suggested townhomes along that west side, pretty small site, might be a difficult one to accomplish. But also talked about this east-west connection, beefing up the landscaping in that area. One suggestion he had, within the, the framework document, we talk about another, whether it's a private drive or some kind of a street, north-south in this location. Should that occur, this auto court could gain access off of the, the public street. Good suggestion potentially for the future. So just to quickly show you some more images, and I won't take away from the applicant and the architecture explaining this, so I'll just quickly move through these as they'll describe them in more detail. You can see the walkouts toward the promenade and toward the corner. So what's required here is a comprehensive plan amendment to increase the height. As mentioned, it's eight stories currently to allow the 17-story and 210-foot building. The density that's proposed here is about 136 units an acre, so that's over the 100 units that's currently allowed within that area. So those two amendments to the comp plan would be required. A rezoning to PUD is also, would be, would be required. When we look at our base zoning, they would need flexibility through that PUD for setbacks primarily. Again, with the height, zoning ordinance maximum is eight stories and 96 feet. The FAR is well over the one that's established there. As we've talked about a lot, oftentimes it's the units per acre that really drives the, the density of the site, not necessarily the square footage for residential development. And they would be parking the structure under what our code requires, so we do our usual parking study. So the flexibility to allow that kind of height and setback would be through the PUD itself. And again, the comprehensive plan would need to, to be amended. So some of the issues for the planning commission to discuss and consider tonight is, one, the land use that's proposed here, the residential piece. Again, this is in a commercial area where housing is allowed, but primarily the height and the density. Is that 17 stories acceptable in this location and that kind of density? Now, this is an area in between France and York where we have talked about allowing greater height and density. We haven't settled on specific numbers as of yet. Additional issues that would come forward should a formal application be made, we would do the usual traffic study. The applicant has suggested that they will meet the city's affordable housing policy. Staff has emphasized, we'd like to see the units within the structure. There's no specific proposal here this evening, but with any formal application, they would have to respond to the, the city's affordable housing policy, and they have indicated that they would do that. Would also ask for a shadow study similar to what we had with the Estelle project. So with that, I will stand and answer any questions that you may have, and the developer is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there questions for Carrie? Commissioner Lee?
Thanks, Carrie. What is the actual height of the podium, I guess?
Ah, that...
I wasn't able to find that anywhere.
Yeah, I did not run that number. Yeah, that may be a question for, for the applicant. I'm not sure what that number might be.
Okay, so the, the building itself is 210 feet?
Correct.
17 stories, okay. And when you were talking about the affordable, actually, these plans are pretty detailed. What would you expect to see in terms of affordable units based on the city's policy?
Yeah, so if they were to meet the policy by providing the affordable housing within the building, they would have to provide 10% of the finished floor area of the units to be included for affordable housing units. So what that specific number is, not sure, but the policy talks about square footage and not specific unit numbers.
Okay, so then they would have a choice of saying it's going to be a one-bedroom affordable unit or a two-bedroom. We don't get in, the city doesn't get involved in it, it's just total square footage?
That's the policy, yes. But we do, we'd like to see a variety of, of units, one, two, and three-bedroom, to provide housing for families as well. So we'd like to see a mixture.
Okay. And I was just looking at the high-density development chart you enclosed in here. What, what makes this project so much more dense than the rest? Density is defined by the units per acre. So they have 170 units, I guess? So if they had said, well, we're going to have less, a fewer one-bedrooms, we'll make, instead of these two one-bedroom units, we'll make one three-bedroom unit. That would drop the unit count, and then that would decrease the units per acre, right?
It would. So with this, with this development, it's the site that makes the density so high. Being just over an acre in size, you know, some of the 170-unit buildings, or 240 is kind of the number that we've been seeing a lot, those are on larger sites.
Right, okay. And I was glad to see Mick's comments. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Strauss?
Commissioner, take the, I'll just get into, I mean, you know, the Estelle project was referred to as a transition piece. Did that specifically mean that those properties west of France? I mean, that was a specific designation for...
Correct.
That side of France?
Right. Yep, that was seen as that transition zone, going from single-family into that area up to France and into the more, the higher density area, which this is located in.
Though, I mean, height is still going to be discussed. But so, but we're not talking about a project in...
In a transition zone, correct.
So it is different, yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for, go ahead.
Carrie, what would the setback requirements be for a property that met current zoning for this property, for this location?
Yes, so we start at 35 feet back from the street, but if a building is taller, say, rises to a 50-foot tall building, that setback would have to be 50 feet. So it's, we start at 35, but then it's based on the height of the building.
And what about from the east, west, north? All the same?
In terms of height, yep. The height establishes the setback.
If it met the current zoning ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. And then Mick Johnson's been doing, as many people probably know, a lot of planning and suggesting about how to adjust our setback and requirements. If, if a property met the current height setback, or the current height of the ordinance, the current height limit of the ordinance, but under the proposed setback rules that Mick is suggesting, would that change much?
In what Mick has talked about, wouldn't have that whatever the height of the building is equals the setback. It's more of a set, setback from property lines, not based on the height of the building, like our, like our current ordinance does.
So it would be approximately the same, 35 to 50 feet, then?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie.
Commissioner Lee?
One more question. Just a clarification. So this would require a rezoning from PCD III, Plan Commercial District III to PUD. Is that because of, not because of the use, but the height? Is that, is that what the conflicting zoning issue is?
Yeah, yeah. So, yep, they're looking for some flexibility for the height. It's also the way that, for the city to ensure that the affordable housing piece is incorporated into the site. We can write that affordable housing provision right into the PUD zoning.
So in fact, they could build it as a PCD III?
They could with substantial variances, yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Carrie. All right, is the applicant here?
Should I go over there?
Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to...
Sorry, you need to say your name and address and all that.
I was going to do that right now.
Okay.
As I say, thank you. My name is Tom Lund. I'm here this evening to present our proposal for the redevelopment of 3650 Hazelton Road in Edina, also known as Guitar Center Site. My company is Lund Real Estate Partners, and it's based here in Edina. I have been a resident here full-time since 1971. On the way over here, my mother corrected me and said, nope, 1959, over on Kellogg, across from Pamela Park. Tonight, I'm joined by my partners, John Troutz, an Edina resident, Vince Streason, an Edina resident, and Paul Sterns. I'm also joined by Trace Jock and Gretchen Camp from ESG Architects, who I've done nine projects with over the years. Terry Monarch from Confluence, the landscape architecture firm that we are using, and Westwood Engineering, who has quite a bit of experience over in that neighborhood. Trace will present the project. Gretchen will present the principles and guidelines that are so important to this project. Terry, the landscape design, and then David Bade will just quickly touch on a couple of the enhancements that'll happen if this project is approved from the standpoint of civil engineering and stormwater and all that stuff. So we have a great, we really feel like we have a, you know, very seasoned team, a great team assembled for this project. It's been a long time since I stood before planning commission. I don't recognize any of you. About 11 years. I worked as a developer at Opus for 17 years, and two of my first projects were Grand View Square. So I was the developer on the office and the senior housing library project, and then the, at that time, we weren't doing housing at Opus. We were really just commercial developers, and so we called up Ron Clark and asked him if he would come over and join us. So he did the condominiums along with me. I also did Edina Corporate Center down on Freddie Richards Golf Course early on in my career at Opus. And then I spent a lot of time and a lot of Opus money on the public worksite, working with Gordon and Carrie to find a new location, which we ultimately did, down in the interchange. And so we were successful at that, and then nasty little recession hit, so. So that was the only project that was actually built as part of that project that I was involved with. Jerry Rowenhurst, who was the founder of Opus, once said, "If it has a bed, we aren't interested." In 2001, that changed. John Solberg, who became the president that year, asked me if I would become a, well, a multifamily developer, something that Opus hadn't done in the past, and start the multifamily platform. Condos were the talk of the town, and so I stopped doing office development and moved over to multifamily, and I've done that since. And this turned out to be a really great opportunity for me. My very first project, Opus kind of went big usually, so my very first project was Grant Park in downtown Minneapolis. 27 stories, 327 units, a great, a great project. I learned a lot in that first project. And then we decided that we'd do a bigger project. We did the Carlisle on the, on the river, and I led that project. 39 stories, 254 units, and again, that was a great project, and then that ran into the 2008 wall as well. But it turned out to be a success. And then I ended up working on many other condominium developments throughout the central United States for Opus. The recession hit, and world didn't end, and in 2010, I was kind of back at it. People were starting to talk about projects and possibilities. And I had a wildly crazy idea to do a high-rise on the Nicklet Mall in downtown Minneapolis. And I did some research, went down to Chicago, saw a lot of cranes in the air, building, not condos, but apartments at that time. I thought, well, we have three and a half million people here, and they have eight million there, and we should be able to do something like that here in Minneapolis. So I did Nick on Fifth, which was good timing, the light rail was coming through, and it was a really smashing success. That was a great project, and to this day is, I think, one of the best projects in I did a little project in the North Loop called Velo. It was, I branded it after the whole bicycling scene in the Twin Cities. And I went on to do student housing at the University of Minnesota, and Ann Arbor, and other campuses around. And today, there's a 26-story tower that's under construction on Washington Avenue, right next to the medical center, that I've worked on for a long time, and it's just about topped off now. And that will open in August of 2018. It's the old site of the Big Ten Restaurant. Some of you may know that. Then I completed some other projects, and one that was really fun was 143-unit project I just completed a year ago in Duluth on Lake Spire. It's called Endy. It was really a very gratifying project, and much needed in Duluth. They needed housing. So how did we get here, and why do we think a 17-story tower at this location would fit? Over the past year, I became aware of a few things happening. I live in South Harriet Park, down by Arden Park. My partners both live within two, three blocks of me, so we're empty nesters. And our neighbors are starting to sell their homes and move. And our neighbors are starting to sell their homes and move. And they were, you know, people that we'd been, you know, close to for a long time. And they were moving to the North Loop or Lake Calhoun, the lakes, the new project next to Calhoun Beach Club, Nick on Fifth, Carlisle. We were feeling a little bit abandoned, you know? How could you leave after twenty-five years? The development around Fifty-Fifth and France in Southdale was really moving along and getting a lot of, a lot of attention and a lot of great things happening. And so, you know, that was number two. Number three was, there was some talk, particularly Estelle, of some taller buildings in the Southdale District. And so that made me think. And all the nicer buildings where my friends were trying to go to were either full, or they didn't have large units. They wanted larger units. It was just becoming a, you know, they were becoming a little bit frustrated with what was out there. So why are we losing all of our residents to, you know, other locations? You know, we have so much infrastructure here. We have such a great community. We have incredible loyalty here. Why can't we have a development like something you might find, the density you might find in Cherry Creek in Denver, or maybe Bellevue in Washington, or the Plaza in Kansas City, where there's high-rise amongst, you know, within a commercial, within commercial districts? And, you know, finally, just, you know, starting to think about my kids, my kids are in their twenties and talking about getting married, and, you know, they have kids and little grandkids, and, you know, why do people leave? And, you know, we need more options here. So light bulb went off, and I decided with my partners that we should try to do a high-rise here in Edina. As we looked at the site, we wanted a site that met key criteria, close proximity to restaurants, parks, entertainments. And in the end, we were, you know, of course, drawn to Southdale and the Galleria, Centennial Lakes area. We found a place where a person can walk to everything. You don't need a car. Within a two-minute walk, you are at the Galleria, you are at Target, you are with, you're at Lund's Byerly's, you're at, you know, three-minute walk to Centennial Lakes Park. So it, you know, it met a lot of that criteria. And fortunately, with some luck and hard work, we, we found what we think is a great site. I'm almost done. So if approved, we will bring what I consider the first Class A high-rise apartment project to the suburbs. It hasn't happened. It's, it's all happened within Minneapolis of this type. And I think that's really a great opportunity. And also just bringing luxury, I might say luxury, but a luxury high, or high-rise living, which is different than a lot of the six-story product that's been built. We'd like to say that we'll be taking the best multifamily projects in the, I tell the story of, in the, in the Twin Cities, you know, take the lakes at Calhoun and take the Nick and take Carlisle and some of the others, and put them in a bag and shake them up, and then take all the best attributes out and put them in, in this project. And I really believe our project introduces an entirely new luxury high-rise apartment option to Edina that doesn't exist. And I truly believe that'll provide an entirely unique housing and lifestyle experience to a broad spectrum of residents, young professionals, families, empty nesters, retired, I mean, everybody. And we also think that our project is very forward-thinking, and it will be a catalyst for future development here in the Southdale, Southdale area. The proposed project meets or exceeds many of the goals of the Greater Southdale Area Planning Framework Vision and the Southdale Working Principles, as well as the needs of the current and future residents of Edina. We very much appreciate your consideration of our proposal. Our goal is to bring a truly unique landmark development that will serve as a significant step forward towards meeting the goals of the Greater Southdale area and your objectives. So that's it. With that, I would like to turn this over to Trace from ESG, who's going to review the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. My name is Trace Jacques. I'm a design principal and partner with ESG Architects in Minneapolis. Tom mentioned a few different projects that have come out of our office. I also have distinction in being the designer of the Weston Edina Galleria before the recession. The other high-rise that's in Edina right now of, of distinction, not too far from our site. When we got this job, or Tom came to us with this project, I had a great familiarity with the site. I grew up in Eden Prairie. I'm a Minneapolis resident. My wife and I spend a lot of time in Edina. I love Edina. Edina equals quality to me. It, it's always equaled quality my whole life. Quality schools, quality neighborhoods, quality parks, quality shopping, everything. And so with this opportunity, just like the Galleria project, the Weston, it's an opportunity to add to that level of quality within the, the city of Edina. Edina's also been a very forward-looking city to me my whole life. I'm, I'm a little older than I look, actually. And it's embraced testing new ideas, testing good new ideas. ESG used to be BW Architects, and we were very much involved with Centennial Lakes and, and other larger developments that tested what mixed use meant and how it works, and how do people live and work and shop and, and experience entertainment together all in one place? And you're taking on a new, a new level of that forward-thinking with this framework. You're, in a sense, parceling off a lot of land to formulate a new, a new city, in a sense, where one exists now. And you're embracing a lot of principles. And so we're designing for that future, but we're also designing for our present. And our present is a site that fits into the larger framework from a dimensional standpoint, a site size standpoint, with this smaller grid that's been proposed. And it also fits into a lot of basic design principles that ESG embraces and integrates into almost all of our projects, very walkable, very transparent, very engaging projects of high quality. I'm going to walk you through our site. The one thing I want you to notice on where this site is located, and Tom made mention of it, we're very central. We're literally on the promenade. We're between France and York, literally dead-on between France and York. We're, in a sense, a beacon in the middle of east-west and north-south. Southdale, we're between Southdale and Centennial Lakes. So it's really a beautiful opportunity to create a bit of a landmark, a bit of an icon. And if there is height to be had, it seems like this is the perfect site for that to happen. Okay, so I'm going to walk you through the basics of the design itself. This is a generic site plan, or a base, basic site plan. It basically illustrates, I'm going to use the hand here. We have a plinth to the building, a base to the building, and a tower. The tower is, it could have been one long blade building, but we decided to break it down into smaller masses. Again, that's addressing this concern of, of size and scale. How do you break it down? Then we have the rooftop terrace, which is above the plinth. The question was asked, how many feet tall is the plinth? On the east and the west, it's thirty-two feet. On the north, there's a small section that's actually four stories, so that's forty-two feet. Basics of the plan at grade level or, or the ground level, very open, transparent lobby on the south side, and then the townhome units that literally access the promenade. And then here's our interior parking with it ramping down and up. And then our service areas here. Auto court, a very generous setback to Hazelton, and there is a generous setback to the promenade as well. One thing to note on this is that the connection, the public connection to a kind of a semi-public, semi-private, almost front porch, that's covered and sheltered and shaded, and very nice. Another level of the building is that amenity terrace level. We have amenity functions. We'll get into more detail. But then it basically turns into units on that footprint of the tower. So what does the building look like aesthetically? Again, we are looking for, like Tom was saying, the best of all the best in town and putting it here in Edina. We're looking at a building that is contemporary but elegant, not edgy in any way, very classic in its design, warm, inviting, transparent at the base, respectful of its neighbors, and really just something elegant and beautiful to look at from a distance, but also function very beautifully for the residents themselves. You'll notice a mixture of materials and a mixture of the massing steps. The corners are very glassy. Those tend to be living spaces. If it were a rectangular building, you'd have four-corner units. Because we did the offset, we have six-corner units. The base of the building also, in a sense, becomes a collection of smaller masses or smaller boxes with subtle variations on their expression and articulation. This is a great view looking north on the promenade. Remember, the bike lane is on the east side, and the pedestrian is on the west, so it plugs into the townhomes beautifully. And really looking the length of the promenade, this is, in a sense, the first, this will be the first project that literally, physically connects residents directly from their unit to the promenade, or their lobby of their building directly to the promenade itself, which I think brings this project into the next level of use for the promenade itself. This is an aerial showing our connection, our public access. The suggestion here is that there might be a piece of public art. We didn't get the benches and the rendering, but, you know, it's an opportunity for the public to sit and enjoy the art, or maybe even step onto this patio with it, this trellis patio that shows the connections of the townhomes. There are units above here. This is a two-story, all-glass lobby. This is the crossing at Hazelton. And then an aerial kind of looking north-northeast, and you see the relative relationship to the Weston Edina Galleria. As I said, we're, we're designing to the future, but we're also designing to the present. Our challenge on this site is really evident in this view. We only have one access point, and that's off the roundabout. There is a curb cut there for the Guitar Center parking lot, and that is how you access the site today. To the west and to the north are surface parking lots or the backsides of, of one-story commercial retail buildings. So we don't have a lot of opportunity to, say, hide our service or gain access from other parts of the site. The promenade's out, Hazelton, it's, it's really just the, the roundabout. So we did our best to dress up a challenging circulation situation on the site. But again, we're also, in, in the recommendations or observations or suggestions by Mick, there was a suggestion of adding townhomes to the west side. Today, it doesn't make much sense. There's a parking lot there down the road. Could you incorporate something depending on where and if the road goes in, where it aligns? Yeah, there is an opportunity that, you know, could present itself. But we decided to take an approach architecturally to enclose the parking, wrap it with an architectural facade, and not just any facade, an interesting and elegant facade itself. So if the townhome idea doesn't happen, it's still a very pleasant facade to experience should a sidewalk come there in the future. So here's a little bit of a close-up of the vehicle court, the entry into the building, and this is the facade. We have green screen. It's, you'll notice it's a very green building and site development. And the last image I have here of, of the architectural design is looking southeast toward Centennial Lakes and the rest of the promenade and the, and the green and blue zones to the south. You see a little more of that west facade and the north facade. We don't treat them like the backsides of buildings. They're very enhanced, very enriched, and it's, it's just something that will be continually refined. The one thing I did want to make mention is some of the materials on the building. What are they? On the lower plinth portions, both the east side and the west side, if you think about them as low pedestrian-oriented residential buildings, the use of brick makes the most sense. On the tower itself, we're thinking more of a glass and precast, and a precast to, you know, give the sensation of stone. And then some metal accents and some wood composite accents to warm the building up. On the inside, these buildings, luxury tends to come with very enriched and enhanced amenity spaces. These are various ESG projects. There's a Nick on Fifth on the top, and top center and top right, and middle right. Some of the types of spaces, very high-end quality spaces. There's the lakes, Latitude Forty-five. We've worked on all of these. And then the units themselves. Tom was alluding to, you know, trying to keep people here in Edina, and this being, setting a new standard, basically, for luxury high-rise residents. And the units themselves, these are also some of these very same projects from the previous page. It gives you a sense of the level of quality and the, the types of spaces, both, you know, kitchens, bedrooms, et cetera. It's very high-end. It's not the six-story wood-over-precast, or type project, so. With that, that gives a, a basic overview of the architectural design. The next section that we, we're going to speak to, I'm going to let, I'm going to give the mic over to Terry Monarch with Confluence, and he's going to talk to the public realm and the landscape.
Hi, my name is Terry Monarch. I'm a principal with Minneapolis Confluence. Been working with Trace, ESG, and Gretchen, and Tom for a number of years. A lot of the projects Tom mentioned, I've been working on with them, so it's been a great opportunity. I'm going to give you a quick overview. I know you've been here a while and been going through a lot of images, but I just wanted to touch on a few basic points with regards to the landscape. Basically, along this street front and promenade front are the two essential landscapes as part of this development. Along Hazelton, it addresses a lot of the existing public character. We know that there was mention in one of the reports that we should maybe adapt or manipulate some of that sidewalk, but there's a lot of infrastructure that was just invested there, so it is something that would have to be considered or looked at with the existing sidewalk and how we can manipulate that, but we definitely have the room to be able to do modifications along that side of the street. That's more of a public type of landscape that we're addressing here. We have the sense of entry to the building, which is a hardscape. It has more of a formal landscape planting. It has a lot of shrub massing, has some color, some seasonal planting in containers as we get closer to the building to kind of address the seasons that we're experiencing here in Minnesota, as well as a more clean and formal and crisp type of landscape. As we move along the promenade, that becomes a transition between public and private landscape. So we're very fortunate to be able to have the opportunity to put housing along the promenade, which will be unique and, I think, a trendsetter within the city of Edina. But to have private landscapes and private entries associated with a public space is a little bit of separation in use with those two environments, so we will develop a landscape that is both inviting to the residential environments as guests or homeowners, but also provide a more detailed landscape along the promenade to enhance that side. You know, where I worked on a Target project when I was at a different firm, and I know we tried to address some of the landscape on the backside of the promenade to kind of hide the facade behind Target. I think the residential development will make that twenty times greater. It's going to be a really nice asset along the promenade. Some of the things you can see in the images here are how the stoops are addressed, and some of the front entry with the hardscape, you know, the walk-up character, which has a nice separation between private and public as well. The amenity deck is the second component of this landscape that is a very unique element, and will bring a lot of interest and excitement to this development and make it a desirable place. There's a mixture of elements, amenities, features, and unique items that'll happen. We have a pool, spa area. We have outdoor dining, kind of gathering areas with cooking centers, outdoor fire pits, seating gathering areas of multiple kinds, both fixed landscape and flexible landscape, where we can have open-space lawns that are usable for yard, yard games, bocce, bags, small gatherings and events. There'll also be. There'll also be coverage structure to provide some shelter from the elements as well on the roof, both sun and rain. There'll be outdoor entertainment areas within the amenity space. You can see there's a mixture of the similar materials that are used in the architecture will be translated to the amenity deck as well, kind of carrying the inside to out, working well with the amenity space that's also on that level. And then providing kind of a year-round use with a lot of different types of activities that can happen with the fire pits, the hot tubs, the lighting at night, so it can be used both day and night by the residents. And then just the type of materials that you can see in some of these, these are a lot of the projects that we've worked on, kind of lend themselves to provide vibrancy, character, modernism that'll bring forward into the architecture. So kind of a quick overview, and I'll let Gretchen take over.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Gretchen Camp. I'm a partner at ESG. In your packet, we did provide kind of a detailed response to the France Avenue-Sout Del area working principals, but we just kind of, I think the summary here kind of recaps some things you've heard, and it really summarizes all the responses we submitted. So just in general, the residential use, we feel, is a really good complement to a lot of the existing commercial and retail uses that are just immediately adjacent to us, so we feel like it's a good balance. It's providing a balance for the area. The project will really support the city's goals of a walkable and pedestrian-friendly community in the lakes, in the Centennial Lakes area. As was pointed out by Trace and Terry, we'll have improved connectivity through the site through sidewalks on the north as well as the west side. The massing of the building is set back in a base podium that really provides a pedestrian scale that feels like a three-story building. And as well as the ground level, at the ground level of activity of townhomes, as well as the primary building lobby along the promenade, we have the active use of the townhomes, which also brings down appropriate scale, pedestrian scale, to the promenade. We'll be incorporating an outdoor public space that was touched upon a little bit, but right now it's really in development, and we'll work with staff and yourselves on that. But we really envision it as seating, public art, obviously a lot of landscaping, et cetera. Stormwater, as Tom had said, we're working with Westwood. The current site is 100% impervious, so this project will meet all city and watershed requirements for stormwater management. And then lastly, all the parking for the project is enclosed, and then on that roof of the parking is the amenity deck that Terry talked about. So just to kind of talk specifically about the memo that you all have in your packet from Mick Johnson, we were thrilled with a lot of the comments and really are in support, or I think the project will really comply with all of his comments. I think I just want to talk about item number four. Maybe just real quick, item number one is referring to, item number one refers to the sidewalk. Currently today, as you can see to the east here, the sidewalk aligns right at the curb line, and so we kind of continued that. And what his diagram isn't showing is the newly constructed roundabout, which is here. I think we don't really have, and we can work with staff on this, we don't really have an issue with doing what Mick is showing here. I guess the impact is it would cut down potentially on a public plaza or a public space there. So you're kind of dividing that space in half, so that's some, I think that would be a trade-off of doing that. So I think the benefit would be that when you're a pedestrian, you have trees and landscaping between you and cars, but the downside of that is if the sidewalk were here, you could kind of have this very large, open space for the public. So we can work through that. We fully agree that if there was a road that came in here in the future, absolutely, our driveway and autocore could certainly function on that road. And then on the north side here, he was just saying, make that more than just a sidewalk, make it a walking pathway, and we absolutely agree with that. I think number four is the one I kind of wanted to focus on. As Trace said, today, when you look west, you're looking into kind of the side and backside of Ethan Allen, and you're looking across a couple lanes of parking there. And on the north, almost identical situation, you're looking into the back of the building and a parking lot. So I think there's future flexibility for that, but today it'd be absolutely very difficult to rent a townhome that would face west. So I think if you see the podium, there is an opportunity in the future to, you'd lose like 20 stalls or something like that to incorporate something in the future, but I think today we would want to move forward with the plan that we have, just given the current context, and then know that there's flexibility in the future. If this building to the north goes away and a street goes through, absolutely, there's flexibility to do that. So that's kind of the end of our presentation, and we're all here for any questions that you have. Thanks.
Wonderful, thank you. Are there questions for the applicant? Commissioner Thorson.
Discuss me the number of parking stalls. It seems even underparked versus some projects I've seen in Boston or some other cities that are probably even more walking and mass transit friendly. I know the trend is for less parking, but that seems to be even a little underparked from what I've seen.
So we have 170 units and 255 parking stalls, so it's 1.5 stalls per unit. And so from what ESG has been currently involved in and previously involved in, we feel really comfortable with that number, and Tom can speak more to it from a marketability and a rentability of the units, but 1.5 stalls per unit, we're more than comfortable with.
Do you have that per bedroom, number of?
I could probably do the math for you if I sit down for a second. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could, something easily we can provide. I don't know if Terry, I don't know if Kerry provided a comparison of other projects, but from what I've been working on, and the most recent project we completed, or is under construction now at Eden, is, was like 1.3 stalls per unit.
We did have one project, if I could just quickly chime in, the apartments at 69th and York behind the CVS, the stalls per unit is 1.0 on that one. We really haven't had much of a, we were concerned with that one. They've got some exterior parking spaces that are shared with the CVS, so quite a bit less than what's proposed here.
I mean, this one just concerns me because there's really no proof-of-parking concept because you're consuming the entire property with building and whatnot. So it's, you don't have the flexibility that you have in some of these other places where we've looked, you know, with more flexibility at the number of parking.
Commissioner Hopp.
First of all, I really, I like the overall design. I think you guys have done a great job, so I really appreciate that. And I appreciate Mick's comments, and I agree with most of what Mick said, and I like the idea on the south side, have a kind of a meandered sidewalk of some kind. One thing, though, one concern I just have in general with the promenade is its kind of sterility, the lack of engagement of the public with the promenade. And I guess, you know, with your project, there's five townhouses that have access to it, which is great, but have you thought about having some of the amenity space on that east side, or just something that would provide greater interaction with the public and the residents of the building with the promenade? Or even a restaurant or anything like that?
This level actually would show that our main lobby will front the promenade, and we can make that a little bit more prominent, I think. We also, too, don't want to ignore Hazelton, but I think the lobby itself can absolutely front that. But Trace, you were saying on this level, well, we have units basically on every other floor.
We have looked at the location for the amenity space on the fourth floor in a couple of locations, either here or even on the end of the building, and there's still some further exploration that can happen there. It's, the orientation and the geometries of the parking structure, basically below, say, the pool has to be favoring the south end and the west side of this. So it's either here or here, and getting stuff over on this level becomes a challenge to just basic efficiencies and unit counts, et cetera. And then the other thing that I want to make mention of the parking is, we do have, we learned that we have a water, we can't go any lower than we are with our parking. So if we were to increase the parking, we'd have to go up or under the townhomes, which gets to be a challenge around the elevator cores, and it's just not as efficient or cost-effective. So if Tom wants to rent these or sell these units, if it's apartment or condos, he's got to make them happy with the parking, too, so it's both.
Well, thanks. I guess I would just encourage you, whatever you can do to help to enhance access for the residents, and just again, and then engaging the promenade, that when you walk down the promenade now, it's just, it's so quiet.
It's very sterile. And this, like I said, this is the first project that I can think of that actually engages it directly. And I think Terry's efforts with the landscape will make a big difference. This is an architect pretending he's a landscape designer, so.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hamilton.
Two small pieces. I really enjoy it. I think it's highly appropriate, the right project in the right place at the right time by the right people. My hat's off to you. Thank you very much. Very nice presentation to boot. One thing I would ask is that maybe you think, seriously, you talked about being lead, push that opportunity. I think there's some issues in Edina with water quality, with, we have lots of opportunity to make it a showcase to, it seems. It seems like your client base might be really interested in a very energy-efficient building. I think it's a way, not only do you stand out here, clearly you do, in every way, three-dimensionally in the market, but I think that would be another feather in your cap, and I think Edina is more than ready to support that. But thank you, thank you very much. It's a lovely presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Nemrah.
Yeah, thank you. To borrow a word from Mr. Jacques, I hope I pronounced your name right, I'm sorry if I didn't. It looks like a quality project with a quality team, so I really do applaud this project. I am not an architect or a designer, so please take these comments from a, you know, from someone that does not have your skills. Again, I really like a lot of what you said. As Commissioner Paulson said, I do, I do wonder about the parking. I don't, I don't know what you're comparing it to. I suspect that there's more parking is needed for this development than will be needed from other developments Mr. Lund has done that are in more urban centers, where people probably need, on average, fewer, the residents need fewer cars than they probably will want here. And as Commissioner Hopp said, I hope that there's something, I'd like to see a little bit more. I mean, it looks good, but when you present the plan, it would be good to see more about how you're engaging, more drawings or more demonstration how you're engaging or enhancing the promenade experience. One thing I'm wondering, and that probably goes for the whole of the building, and this is really maybe the first place where my lack of architecture and lack of design ability comes out. It seems from some of the drawings that it, that the building is more, has more windows on the higher levels. So I'm wondering what the, as pedestrians walk by the building, what they will see. A lot of times when people come to make presentations to us, they'll have videos that are kind of nice, you know, all these happy people walking on just the most perfect day. If you, and it shows the people walking around the building, and it shows the building, but if you do such a thing, when you come back, it'd be really nice to see how the building itself looks to the pedestrians as they walk by it. That would be interesting to see. Questions for you. Have you had any, have you had any neighborhood feedback yet to this development? None, okay. When you come back, or maybe even now, it'd be interesting to know what kinds of commercial activity you are thinking would be possible in the building, what kind, what restaurants, retail. It sounds like some of the facilities in it are going to be for the residents, and so I'm wondering if there's anything that's going to be a public component.
We've intentionally not included anything here. It's just, it's a freestanding building for the residents, and if we put retail here, it's, then we, then we, I think we get to another, another level of parking. Now, that issue will have to be discussed, which is very expensive. We're not trying to build less parking than we need. To your questions earlier about parking, the most I've ever done in a high-rise is 1.54, which was Grant Park, and have since that time really dialed things back considerably, and it's really taken a leap to do that as a developer. Because developers always want more parking, make sure we've got enough parking for everybody. And it turned out at Grant Park, it was dead-on, then we went to 1.3 down at Carlisle. And both those projects really relied on cars, you know, so it was, it wasn't, they weren't sites that, you know, nobody's going to have a car. It's not like at the University of Minnesota, we're doing 430 units, 26 stories, and we have 150 parking stalls, but we're on light rail, you know. Nick on Fifth, yeah, I think we were 1.4, something like that there, so again, we are on, we are on light rail there, so I feel very comfortable with it, but it does take a leap from the developer, as well as the leadership of the city to, you know, to accept that.
I appreciate your answer. I'm very confident that you and your team know a lot more about that than I do, and you'll live with the answer a lot more than I will.
Yeah, right, okay.
I had, let's see, one or two other questions, and that is item four, that, from Mick's note about the backside, kind of, and I'm, you know, this relates to another question, and that is, is it the kind of thing where perhaps more windows or something could help? I mean, he's suggesting some of the townhouses over there, but I'm wondering if there's, looking ahead, there could, there's, you know, it's very conceivable there'd be a more of a pedestrian experience at that property to your west, and so something, look ahead where, in the design herself, that makes it more pedestrian-friendly without changing your architecture.
Yeah, I think the north side, absolutely, and what we're going to, like Trey said, right now, we're really just working off architectural drawings, and we don't have landscape absolutely incorporated into it per Terry, but on the north side, absolutely we'll be doing that. And on the west side, I think that internally, we could incorporate things like our bike parking room on that side, just so that there's more people going in and out of the building on that side. We have kind of, in the corner there would be an opportunity where you see that green screen, and then as well as incorporating a sidewalk on that side, that's, we absolutely can do that. And I said, like I said, in the future, when, you know, the predictions come true that the experts have about no one driving anymore, and that's about the time that maybe the street's going through, there's flexibility on this side to take those 20 stalls out or whatever and put in active, more active uses. But until then, we're looking over a pretty grim parking lot in a backside of a building, and we're just really concerned about the viability of those units.
So before I get to my final question, which is more really not a design, so I, again, I'm not an architect, and I think you really did a great job, so I'm very pleased with this project and your team, so thank you. One question, perhaps Mr. Lund, you may be the best person to answer. This is curiosity as much as anything. My guess is that you started this plan a few months ago, but since then, tax laws have changed significantly in this country affecting real estate. How has, how has the new tax law affect how you think about this project from a business standpoint?
I haven't thought about that. I didn't expect that question. I don't know, I haven't, we really haven't addressed it, you know, haven't talked about. In fact, amongst my colleagues in the industry, I haven't ever heard anybody actually, you know, talking about it. If it was, are you talking about real estate taxes specifically, or what? What taxes, are you talking about income taxes or real estate or?
The changes in property taxes for residential homes, the, you know, and other changes in the tax bill, obviously, changes, you know, just, it's an immense change, and I think it will affect a lot of developments, and I'm just kind of wondering what your thoughts were.
Well, when I circle back in, I don't know how many weeks, I'll get an answer to you, or maybe even before that if you'd like, but I honestly haven't given any thought to it. Have any of you back there? John? Nope. Partners haven't either, so I'm not trying to avoid it, I just haven't thought about it, so I'm sorry.
Well, thank you for everything. Thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Just real quickly, if I could, Gretchen, and you're talking about the west side and removing 20 parking units to make that more viable for pedestrians, should that street go through, et cetera, et cetera. As I read the plan, that's all sloped parking, that's not a level floor. So it's not like we're going to pop in a couple of windows, put in some plumbing, and call it townhouses.
No, I think you have to add the others.
So it would have, it would be... So it would have, it would be out in the 20-foot setback?
Yes, right.
Okay.
That's something that Mick, Mick, I'm sorry. Sorry. Mick didn't have access to the building plans, so when he was drawing his diagrams, he didn't realize that was a whole road parking, and that it was on a slope, inclined surface. So you're absolutely right. It's something that would have to be added on. But that might be affected by, you know, if there is a road, where is that road? You know, what's, where is the setback? If the road drifts a little west, then we've got plenty of real estate. If it's right on that property line, it's gonna be challenging, or you have to deal with it more in a landscaping, and it is already a very enhanced facade, if you look at parking structures.
Oh, I, I was gonna say that, and I think that that would be the requirement then. Instead of saying, we're gonna put the onus on doing that in the future, we have to, we have to carry that burden now and make it as delightful as you can for pedestrians on that side because, because the other opportunities.
Right. And we've committed to carrying that burden now, not knowing what the future is, and if in fact we couldn't do something, will it, will it be good in a different situation than it is today? And we think it will be, so.
Thank you.
I agree with a lot of what was just said, and just something I've been thinking about is, this might be, you know, far away, far enough away from the neighborhoods in Edina, but there always seems to be the risk of some height-based public backlash for any structure that, you know, has some height to it in this city. So I would just say, building off of what was already said, something that can make that a lot easier pill for people to swallow is when you couple that with things that are more targeted towards community engagement and pedestrian stuff. I know there are like bike paths that already go through this area, things like that. So that's something to think about, if not retail, just other public amenities. I like what you've already done with the artwork, but just keeping that in mind as you continue to progress. And especially when you get to the part in the process of talking to people in the community, that's something that I think can make it a lot easier, you know, for them to, as I said, swallow the pill of the height if they see something that's gonna be directly benefiting not just the people that are living in the structure, but the community members as well, since this is already such a vibrant area. So not so much a question, but just I would say, keep that in mind.
Commissioner Charles.
Yeah, I'll be brief here. What I really appreciate was, was the background and the experience with other projects that you brought and fleshing that out. And it just gives me a great deal of confidence of, of, you know, what you're bringing, and I think the city council would really, well, I'm sure they know you and all those projects, but I found that very, very informative. Just a couple other point, I mean, the, the idea of developing all four sides, I mean, I think that's important, and the connection to the promenade. I really liked Commissioner Hobbs' emphasis on that. I think that's, that's a critical bit. And just something is that servicing all the parking and the drop-off off of that roundabout, I'd be curious to see how that works. I don't see Minnesotans handling roundabouts all that well yet, but it'll be, it'll be interesting. At first, I, and I do see there is an in and out to the parking ramp, so it wasn't just a one-way, but that's gonna be a lot of activity off of what is sometimes a traffic maneuver that people don't have a lot of experience with, but thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more? Commissioner Lee.
Thank you for the presentation. ESG is getting a lot of face time here in Edina, so. Sketch plan, it's always a dilemma because we're supposed to be having a two-way dialogue, and hopefully you've come here early enough in the game that you're still flexible to hearing some suggestions. But by that same token, we've received some, some drawings that were very, very sketchy, and it was hard for us to tell anything. So I think that, that one of the dangers about having too much detail is exactly that. We wanna stay flexible enough to sort of hear the comments that we are giving tonight. Overall, I had to think about the philosophy of the greater Southdale work area, and it did talk about the fact that we have a property here that is in the center of the district where we can sustain a little more height and a little more density. I think that in some ways will address some of the height concerns that you may face from the public, but then again, it goes to how high is the right height? So as far as the location, it appears to be a good site for this type of development. And I did wanna make that point because we, many people have said, what's the difference between this and Estelle? You know, if Estelle went down, why would, why, why should anybody accept something like this? Why, I see it as quite different, because you're, you're trying to adhere to the city's philosophy and the principles which are still being worked on and finalized in the greater Southdale area plan. The other point is that we talked about transitions, transitioning, transitioning to the surrounding areas, particularly that we would honor our, our neighborhoods and make sure that there is a buffer transition zone. That's in our comp plan, and in this case, I think you're smack in the middle of, of the center core of it, and there's plenty of transition around you. So again, I think that in some cases, it's pretty compelling what you're proposing here. The other thing that we've been after, and I know that Commissioner Hamilton has, has raised this, and again, you're, you're starting to touch upon that, is in exchange for an increased height or these types of proposals, we would be looking for some really quality design. And I think you do have a primo property here, which is right on the promenade. In some sense, it is the gateway to the promenade leading to the Galleria. So in some respects, I think that there is a greater responsibility to look beyond just your building, and maybe, yes, you have to kind of make some suggestions for that public realm. I do understand that the city has just redone those sidewalks, but to me, what you put there will shape what follows, just like you're influenced by what's there already. So I will, I would, I would encourage you not to be afraid of that suggestion that there, there will be another street back there. If you design for it, it will come. I know you have some issues with the parking and things like that that will have to be looked at. Let me just see here. You had mentioned that this building would be a beacon, and I agree with that, an icon. So in some respects, today, it makes sense that you would define that as in terms of height. But in the future, it may not be the only tall building. So again, I say, I think you have a great opportunity to say, what is a beacon? Make it really spectacular in terms of what's up there. It, the exterior materials, I think in some respects, some sketch plans have come before us with a little more detail about what those materials are. Sometimes that can define the vision, and that is in some ways why we wanna be on your side for that. It's like, wow, I gotta have those materials. I can just picture that granite or whatever it is. So in some ways, I feel like that part needs to be thought out probably sooner rather than later. And in some ways that you've already had this building rendered up, it makes me think there had to be some materials under consideration, so I kinda wish that there was more discussion of that. Yet you have very good detailed photos at the micro level. Trust me, all the units that are gonna be built coming down the road will be of high quality and on the interiors. We are assured of that, and if anything, we've seen a lot of those kinds of photographs. They all tend to start to look the same. So I think really, it's about the amenities and your particular site, what you're gonna do here on this promenade. I'm interested in that concept of rental, a rental community that is a high-rise rental. I believe, Tom, you, you said that's something we don't have here, and I'm, I'm trying to get my head around the true market for that. Typically, a high-rise community that's luxury, it, it's, it's going after the view. So maybe you can talk about what is, do people like looking down on Edina? I don't know. What, what's, what's that about?
Oh, okay. The view, yes, for sure, it's the view. It's concrete. So in concrete's, concrete buildings feel different. They just do. When you walk in the buildings, you walk through the corridors, they're solid. We have more opportunities for glass, you know, expansive glass here. And, you know, just getting, you know, getting up in, in this building and getting up onto that amenity deck and facing west and having all the amenities, the outdoor amenities, and I don't know if any of you have been to Nick or Carlisle or the new Nord House in northeast. It's pretty unique when you get up onto those decks and you have all these, you've got the fire pits going, and you've got people out here grilling, you've got people in the pool, and you've got people, you know, have rented one of the clubrooms to throw, throw a private party, or they have a, you know, chef come in and cook for a group of, you know, five couples or something like that. It's, it's just a, it's a really unique community. It creates a real community of people that, you know, will be moving about the entire area, but they will also, you know, I find they, they just love being where they're at just because the, the quality of the amenities, the, you know, whether it's fitness, or we have an outdoor yoga platform where, you know, somebody's running a class, or we have a spin, you know, we got a spin, spin class going somewhere. We'll have, you know, we intend to have two private club areas here, one up high in the building, which would be something that could be used publicly by, by the people that live here. You can go up and read a book, and just hang out, or you could go up there and you could rent it and have, you know, 10 people over, and you could, you know, we'd have a chef's kitchen and such up above with, you know, just absolutely spectacular views looking to the west. That'll occur again on the fourth floor as well, which will spill out, you can kind of imagine spilling out onto this fourth floor amenity deck as well. So there's just something about a, a high-rise. I don't, I don't know. I, I've done enough six-story buildings too, and I know that I can do those well, but there's something special about a high-rise, and they just, they just feel, there's a lot of quality there. And you know, the, the units, you know, to your point about, I've seen these pictures before, and, you know, the units start to all look alike. You know, this would be more, I'd say, condo quality. So, you know, we really see it as, and I don't know if any of you have been down to the lakes at Calhoun. It's such a unique project and so well-executed, and it's really frankly so different from anything I've seen in the Twin Cities. It's pretty spectacular. So we see kind of raising the bar, because a lot of the six-story product that's been built in the suburbs, and I built Velo downtown, so I'm guilty too. It's all the same, pretty much. You know, the ground's the same, the whirlpools are the same, it's all the same product. You know, we really wanna do something different here, that, we wanna do some, yeah, we'll have a, we'll do small units, we'll do big units, you know, big units which people have been asking for. You know, we'll do a 3,000 square foot unit or a 3,500 square foot unit, which is much more like a home, and everything in between. But to just do 1,100 square foot, two-bedroom units, split two-bedroom units with a kitchen in the middle with no storage, which has been built, I don't know how many units have been built in the last few years, they're all the same, that's not, that's not us. We really wanna appeal to a much broader population of people.
So let me ask you this. What's the practicality of building these as condominiums?
Condominiums, condominiums, they're hard, toxic, they're very difficult to build. I've built a lot. The liability law has changed, you know, in the favor of, I think, both parties, the homeowners association and the residents, as well as the people that build them, the architects, the contractors and such. They're almost.
Because I have been hearing a lot of requests for different housing types, and there is a perception out there that, here we go with another luxury rental property. Is there a way to get more of a mix, more of a, of different types of housing, townhomes, condominiums?
Right, right, right. Well, I had this conversation with Kevin this morning over coffee.
Could these be built as rental initially for conversion later to condominium?
It, this will be the, the poster child for conversion, but that's really not been, you know, the intent here. I mean, I, it's so hard to say. This would be a great project convert. In Chicago, it happens all the time, we just haven't done it, you know, up here. We did a little bit, you know, pre-'08, and that didn't, that didn't work very well. You know, the financing of condos is tough, it's really tough. Banks are still very skittish about it. It takes an immense amount of time and money to, to design. You basically have to go through construction drawings before you can even sell a unit or take reservations per the law. So you're spending a million dollars there, and then you build your sales center, and you spend another million dollars there, and you staff it, and then that, that all takes two years, and then you start construction, it's another two years. So now you're four years, and you're exposed to a lot of market cycles. Cap, the capital markets can change lots of things, so it's, trust me, I think about it because, gosh, it would be much more profitable probably to do condos, frankly. But there's, there's really a lot of risk. That's, you know, a lot of people, unfortunately, at Opus, we were, we had belts and suspenders, and we, we did everything to, you know, take care of the customers and build these buildings as, you know, you know, we did 2X everything you would do in a building normally, you know, and we didn't get sued, you know, for the most part, we were very clean, which was great. So I know how to do that, it's just it's.
Well, I would encourage you to really think hard on that one. I, I think there would be a huge market for it, and it sure would be a vote in favor of this project when people said, why that and not this one?
I agree.
Well, because of that, but.
I totally agree.
That's all I'll offer up on that piece. All right, I just had a couple more comments, then I'm finished here. The art piece, I just also wanna say, another great opportunity. So that corner, if you grab a little more space, and we all like to say, oh, let's just draw a sculpture in there, but art and technology today has changed completely. There are different installations that can go in, artists are working in so many different realms, it, it could be much more flexible and be ever-changing and be a draw. People would go right to that node. So that's the kind of thinking that I really wanna see on this piece of property. I know ESG is a fantastic designer, and they are very competent. The pieces I wanna look for in this sketch plan review involve other things, the things that you aren't necessarily doing for every project. So that one, and let me see if there was one more. Yeah, commit a little more on the stormwater piece. I know you said, well, it's, it's better than it was, but every project's better than it is now. So if you're gonna hold that stormwater onsite, how are you doing that? If that, we love the word green, but if it's a green roof, what's it really doing besides just looking pretty? Are you using that as part of your stormwater drainage system? All right, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others? All right, well, I also agree. I think this is a beautiful project. I like what you're proposing. I completely agree with Commissioner Hobbs. He stole what I was gonna say, and others, to really come back with some plans for the real active promenade. That's just been, you know, back door and just back walls, so you really have a great opportunity. So if you could expand even more than what you're showing on along Hazelton to also curve that around and focus more on the promenade. I like the idea of the curved sidewalk on the street. I think that's it. I'm kinda, I think it's good if you kinda can match with some of those suggestions that Mick has, has provided, and I think it looks good. So I think that's it. So next is the ordinance amendment for the rooftop dining.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. So this is just kind of an introduction kickoff. The city council has asked staff in the planning commission to take a look at a zoning ordinance amendment that would allow rooftop dining or rooftop restaurants. So to give you a little background on that, back in 2010, Salute, down in the 50th and France area, wanted to do a rooftop restaurant. wanted to do a rooftop restaurant, and the planning commission was charged with drafting an ordinance. So, we did that. The commission, the planning commission at that time concluded they wanted to allow rooftop restaurants as a conditionally permitted use in all of our commercial zoning districts. So, that included 50th and, well, I shouldn't say all, in the PCD II and PCD III districts. That would include 50th and France and the Grand View area, with, with conditions, and that ordinance is included in your packet. The council did not recommend approval of that ordinance, and in fact, actually, we created an ordinance that specifically prohibited rooftop restaurants throughout Edina. Part of the issue was the proximity of the new condominium, well, new at that time, in the 50th and France area. And when the, when the council asked us to take a look at allowing this use, again, express some caution and concern about, about that specific area again. So, I've outlined three options, and they're the same options essentially that we looked at back in 2011. Continue to prohibit rooftop restaurants, allow as a permitted use, or allow as a conditionally permitted use. What staff might recommend is we take a look at allowing them as a conditionally permitted use. That gives the city some review authority over it. But, maybe we look at just the PCD III zoning district, which is just the greater Southdale area, and we avoid those, those smaller areas, the small area plan areas, and just focus on the Southdale. So, we've provided some background information, the study that we did in 2011. We've updated that a little bit, not a lot of changes since then. But, I just throw that out there for discussion. What we'd like to do is, we've scheduled a public hearing to consider it in, at your January 24th meeting, so we can draft an ordinance based on some of your recommend, recommendations and discussion this evening. So, with that, I'll just open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Carrie. Are there comments, Commissioner Strauss?
Commissioner, your last statement about what staff would recommend, the greater Southdale, so then rooftop dining would not be allowed in, say, the 50th and France?
Correct. If we just limited it to the planned commercial district three, that would include Southdale, the site that we just looked at here this evening, Galleria.
Do you think it's grand, do you think it's PCD III?
It's not. It's PCD II. We could still consider PCD II. I don't want to eliminate that from the possibility.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hamilton?
The thing we want to avoid is setting up a process so that after you've made a conditionally permitted use, we end up with 9,000 people here yelling at us because they don't want it in their neighborhood. So, we want it to be pretty crystal clear about where it can be and where it can't. But, one of the things about 50th and France and 44th and France, it's on a border. What they do across the street is what they do across the street. And there isn't, I don't think, such a restriction in Minneapolis for that area. So, what question are we actually asking here? Are we simply saying that at 50th and France and 44th and France, we're willing to have somebody else have that problem and translate that problem across the street to our, to our residents, but we just don't want to get dirty and invested in it? Or do we really think it's inappropriate there in a way that we can control it? Because of the conditional use, then we get to say what needs to happen there and how it needs to happen, and what it's about, and set the stage for it, and make everybody else toe up to the mark that we draw. So...
Are you saying that to have it as a condition use permit for wider additional zones or just...
I would certainly like to at least consider that instead of cross it off immediately. The easy thing to do, it seems to be, would be to say, we'll put it in greater Southdale because it's not there now, nobody lives there, it's going to be okay, and we won't have to fight with, with folks. If we're really saying, we don't think it belongs at 50th and France, that's fine. I'm comfortable with that. But, the people across the street don't say that.
Carrie, I, oh, sorry. Discussion we should still be called if you recognize. Carrie, what, what brought this up? Is this coming from council? Did they have, they had received requests, or maybe they're rethinking and thinking, you know, now this doesn't look so reasonable. Back in 2011, it did, but maybe we should revisit it. Has there been any, what's the, what's the lead-up to this?
Yes. So, you might note that part of the minutes talked about allowing it in the greater Southdale area, even back in 2011. But, this comes to us, the Lifetime Fitness that wants to go in at the JCPenney site, they would like to do some, a rooftop dining kind of operation up there. So, that's the reason that it's come before us.
Sure.
Don't we already have it at the new Lunds? There's rooftop dining over there.
Yeah, it's a seating area up there. It's not...
That has food.
You can bring food out there, yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to look at it more, but my initial feeling is that I, that I would agree with Commissioner Hamilton, that this should be a benefit that would be available citywide. And then I would, I would encourage us to think harder about the reasons why someone would fail to, you know, fail to uphold the standards that we're seeking to have. That puts their, you know, if it's a, if it's a separate license and they lose the license if certain things happen, I mean, there's probably a lot of public experience in other cities that we can draw from to tailor, design the use permit to, to say, look, it can't have, it has to have this, and it can't have that, and if we get a bunch of this, it's at risk. I, I would, I would encourage us to try to go down that path and allow it to be open to everyone, as long as they live up to whatever standards we design.
Is one of the concerns the noise? I mean, and so, is there something, is there a way to have, some way to track that with the condition?
Yes, yeah, so, we have the noise ordinance, and there is a way to track that, so we can put specific conditions in there in regard to noise. I guess the short answer is yes. If, if I might ask, so the ordinance back in 2011, we just considered PCD II and above. We made reference to 44th and France, so that's PCD I. And that's the same with the Valley View, Wooddale area. A lot of those zonings are PCD I. So, should we explore the possibility of all the planned commercial districts?
Are we, that would be my choice. But, are we simply putting off that, that future fight with residents? And we're, we're, we're saying to developers, you can do this, which in fact, when, when push comes to shove, everybody and their uncle is going to show up here and at, at city council meetings, and in the end, they can't. So, let's not...
Yeah, so, with the conditional use permit, if we allow this in the PCD I, II, and III district through a conditional use permit, and someone comes in and they meet all our conditions, we can't say no.
Carrie, are there ongoing conditions?
Yes. Yep, so all, yes, they would have to continue to meet them throughout the life of the operation. If we get a complaint that they're not, we can revoke the conditional use permit.
Yeah, I mean, generally fall under the category of nuisance.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would get a complaint, we would follow up, ask them to come back into compliance. We'd continue to monitor. If they didn't come into compliance, it's at that time we can bring it before the city council and revoke the conditional use permit.
I mean, in my head, I'm thinking about things like noise, lighting, litter.
Hours of operation, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Carrie, what was 50th and France again? Is that PCD II?
Correct.
Okay, and you said 44th and France and Valley View and Wooddale is PCD I?
Right.
And Southdale is?
PCD III.
So, actually, we don't even, oh, we do. Okay, we have it listed here. Okay. It seems to be most clear to have just one policy, but be very clear about what the requirements are. I think the language in here in 2011 was good. I mean, I don't, I, I'm not even sure if I changed anything on there. It seems to apply whether you're in a residential, I mean, not a residential, but a small street, like 50th and France as well as Southdale. The other thing is, in some ways, I see it no different as a, as a patio, what do you call that, sidewalk cafe? What governs that right now?
Those are permitted uses.
Okay. And the timeline of the seasons, when you could actually have a patio rooftop outdoor space, is so short here. There's no issues with people trying to walk by, you know, sidewalk with, and I think right here, we said no, no beverage, right? So, it's not like you're going to be serving drinks up there. It's dining. Dining only is how I understand that.
I would allow alcohol up there. They, they need a liquor license.
A liquor license is required. Okay, again, it's, but it probably doesn't mean you can have a bar on the rooftop.
Potentially.
It could. Mm-hmm. Well, I don't know if that would, something you'd want to qualify or quantify. In some ways, if you're familiar with Stella's, that's a little boisterous, and I, I'm not sure if that would be the whole goal of some of the restaurants that we have here, but I don't know.
Well, that's one thing. I mean, you know, the difference between being at, at 44th and France and being in Southdale is pretty profound. So, you could have a Stella's in Southdale and everybody'd be happy. They probably wouldn't be so happy if you put it on top of Hello Pizza. So, I mean, I think you can, you can kind of calibrate it depending on where it is too. And I do think that having PCD I, II, and III, being open to it makes sense under a conditional use permit. You can limit the size if it's, you know, if it's someplace at 44th and France, it can only have so many patrons at a given time or something like that.
I, I would see just be, and I'm sure this is what you're thinking here regarding the ordinance itself, if you're going to go forward, is, is doing a survey of other ordinances and not just going forward with this one. You know, for example, do we want to be more prescriptive about the types of light at certain times of day, or, without being an expert on these issues, I'm sure that there's a lot of thinking about these that goes on, and I'm sure you're probably already going down that path of trying to see what the current state of the art is for ordinances.
We have been, right. Yeah, we would kind of use this as the starting ground and beef it up.
Would you allow, kind of, I, I like simplicity of saying all or none, but could you contemplate a graduate system, or maybe PCD I, PCD II, you're much more restricted, but once you're in PCD III, which is Southdale, you would contemplate allowing more expansive uses of the rooftop? Because I think very different sorts of environments, and what would work well in Southdale definitely would not work well in 44th and France.
But, if I could, the one, the sketch plan that we were here, that we just had tonight, the rooftop may be immediately next door to those 170 units, which has converted it from who cares at Southdale to it's the same thing as 50th and France. So, be careful what you ask for. You might get it. I understand that. But, it seems like to me, it isn't the question about give to get. And if we're going to give that up, what do we actually get back? And if what we get is a couple of nights where we can all get together and have a beer, that's maybe fine. But, it seems like we could get, we could get more than that. Can you, how can you bend that back so the quality of the development, the quality of the street level public space, the quality of the, help me out here, that's good for the city, that we would like to see, the public realm has an investment. If you want to have this cash cow up on your roof, which is what it really is, you have a very small investment in capital to get a very large return, which causes parking problems all over. You've increased your, your capacity by 20% or more on the roof, but you haven't increased your parking requirements at all. So, the difficulties for the city are there, but they could be quite delightful if we, in return, get something that we see as valuable. And I'm not seeing any of that, and I don't even know if you can do it in an ordinance that says, you know, you want this cash cow, here's what you have to give us, like a park taking. I don't know. I don't know what you can do.
Well, I think if we are advocating for increased density, and we're looking to the future, I think we have to consider some of these things. It's, it's starting to sound like, again, huh, it's fine the way it is, and therefore, we don't need to do anything. And people have brought up the traffic issue many times in regards to residential, new development, residential or commercial. In some ways, this is no different. So, whatever arguments we have against that, obviously, we might, maybe we might attach a traffic study to it. I don't know if, if we need to be assured of that. But, again, I see it as kind of a minimal thing, that rooftop dining wasn't so common maybe 10, 20 years ago. And we do want our, our commercial areas to be viable and attractive to people who are here, as well as people who come to 50th and France or Southdale. So, in some ways, I kind of throw that under the umbrella of future planning.
Commissioner.
I had a comment and a question. And again, a lot of this comes from, this is, this is not an area, I mean, I'm just thinking, I'm off the seat of my pants here. First of all, regarding parking, I think that's a good comment. It looked like the, in section two of the ordinance that was drafted in 2011 tries to address parking somewhat, and maybe that's another thing that needs to be surveyed to see what's the current thinking on how to address parking from these rooftop dining locations. But then, listening to discussion, the other thing that comes to my mind is, how does, how does, in terms of like nuisance or, or use of public resources, how does rooftop dining differ from patio dining? Because patio dining sails through right now, say, oh, that looks lovely, you know? What would be the difference?
Yeah, it, it is very much the same. We don't require additional parking spaces for that patio deck kind of, of dining. We were looking at that as part of this ordinance, allowing a little bit more. One thing about the, the 44th and France area, so if a restaurant were to go in there, they need to park it. Most of those, most of those sites, with the exception of like the Evervee building, if a restaurant were to go in there, they do have seating, so potentially, they could do rooftop, rooftop dining if we were to proceed with something like this. But, like Hello Pizza, they're not technically a restaurant. I don't believe they would, well, they would have to turn it into a restaurant. I guess the, the Dry Cleaner site, if that were to redevelop, they would have to provide the parking on that site. So, it's a little tougher to, to do it in those smaller nodes because of the parking requirements.
You know, I just, sorry, it just seemed like if someone did put a restaurant with rooftop dining at that Dry Cleaner site, that might be really cool. I mean, that's kind of an urban spot, and it's 44th and France, but it's a little bit away from residential, and that, that, you know, that could be kind of a cool, neat thing, so...
I think you asked, what's the difference of patio and roof, and I'm, I just, this just occurred to me, is that it puts you up in the air. And now, most people can accept what's happening on the ground level, and typically, don't have a lot of residence, residences at, at ground level, right next to a business. But, once you're up in the air now, any kind of high-rise or five or six-story building is looking down on it. So, you've, you've, you've kind of encroached upon that space. I guess that might be the one difference with possible noise or just visual, and...
That makes sense.
Yeah, and I think that was the concern with 50th and France and the Salute, with that being elevated and with the condos nearby. If we are to explore this, do we want to look at a setback requirement from any residential, not... look at a setback requirement from any residential? Not right, right now, it's, just talks about a 50-foot setback from R1 and R2 property, but maybe we want to expand that to a setback from any residential use. Whether 50 feet is the number, I'm not sure. We could do a little more research on that one, but that's something to think about.
So number three, amplified sound audible from adjacent property is prohibited. What does that mean?
I think, I think the thinking back then was having speakers up on, on the roof that would be, you could hear from adjacent properties.
Joan, would it read better if it said amplified sound audible to adjacent property?
Yeah, it's not, that sounds like the neighboring, right?
Well, I think that is the intent. You can't hear it from the adjacent property.
Oh, that's, okay. Is that how you read it?
No.
Yeah.
Turn it around.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, work on that one. Have Roger work on that one. But yeah, it seems, I don't know that that, the feet, the 50 feet or whatever, you know, it is, again, arbitrary and, and it's really more to the lighting and the noise and if there's a way to control that, but.
Or even, you know, screening or some kind of, like imagining if it was on top of Salute, if there were even some planters to screen the folks there from the condos, it might be enough.
Yeah.
I think there's an expectation that people would be good neighbors and failing that they'd lose the right, not the, not the residents, but the people with the dining facilities would be good neighbors. And I think that would be something that, you know, we don't want a lot of calls about.
Yeah, because I think if you do it, open it or say to any residential, some of these are going to be part of a residential development. So right there, you would not allow it. So I, yeah.
So condition five, we talk about screening just from R1 and R2. We could expand that to any, any residential use?
Or any use, just it has to be screened. I don't know. It's a tough one. But I think, yeah, just to be limiting, limiting it just to one Southdale area, I don't. Yeah.
Where you are really space compliant.
Yeah.
If you are a small restaurant trying to maximize your busy season, when everyone wants to eat their restaurant, that's your opportunity.
Because we're all, yeah, we're all looking for those in those nice nights.
Waiting two hours on a nice night to leave a table.
You're going to turn this around so it comes back on the 24th?
I will do that. This was excellent. Yep, this gives me a lot. Thank you. If you have any other ideas, feel free to email me.
Okay. So are there any correspondence and petitions? I never fail to ask that. I also skip over community comment, but I never skip over the correspondence and petitions. How about chair and member comments? Are there any? Commissioner Hobbs? Oh, my gosh. Thank you. I skipped over that. I think that's, I think I'm in, I'm in complete denial and did that deliberately. Right, let's talk about that, Carrie. I think I asked you to add that on the agenda, too, and then I jump over it.
Yes, and we talked about this at our meeting, at our last meeting, and the Greater Southdale Area Group talked about it as well. So with Commissioner Hobbs leaving us, unfortunately, we'd like to replace his position with a planning commissioner. He'll continue to help out whenever he can until he, until he leaves us. And you can always come back as a special guest.
Like a TV show, special guest. You could, you, this is going to be filled through the regular process interview or?
No, this is just a planning commission replacement to the, yep, so it's, we're just asking for a placement of one of you.
From the planning commission, because it was the planning commission.
Yeah, it's the planning commission appointed position on the group.
So, I know everyone's kind of busy on other ones, but.
Who's, who's on that commission right now? Is it you?
Steve and I and Commissioner Hamilton.
But also you, right? Okay, so there's three from the planning commission on it, okay.
Yeah, and they just, they meet a lot and there's a lot, you know, sometimes we're not all there and it's good. So.
Plea, as we saw tonight, what's going on with the Greater Southdale Area Plan is really, really relevant to everything that we're doing here. And of the, I don't know, the sidebar opportunities that the planning commission has brought, for me at least, this one has a great deal of intensity to it, but boy, is it fun and rewarding and thoughtful. And I, I think, you know, you, you really get a huge return for, for the time you put in there. Would you, would you agree with that?
I would totally agree. Yeah, it's, it's been a real pleasure seeing on that, that group and really exciting some of the things that we're thinking about. So I encourage anyone who's interested. It's, it is a lot of time, but it's, it's very rewarding.
Well, we're missing two commissioners tonight.
Jimmy's retired now that he's off 44th.
Yeah.
And they're, yeah, they just rolled off or will be shortly. I don't know how you want to, how soon you want to fill that or get a.
Well, you know, I guess we were hoping, you know, we can wait and see if there's more.
It's not essential. We did it.
I know that Ian's been attending a couple and had, you know, shown some interest and.
I would say I would have some, but I think my problem might be I was scheduled to be to these meetings. If I tried to layer on all those, I mean, I would be, it's very difficult to make that, you know? See, I know the meeting's scheduled and it's.
It is, yeah. So we could, I guess, see if there, if Jimmy or Sheila or.
Can I propose we wait at least to put it out there formally and, and make sure that they had a chance to weigh in? They may not be interested, but.
But if they don't, I think.
Yeah, we didn't ask.
So it sounds like Ian, you would be interested or?
Is it a situation where we formally need to put a planning commissioner or could there be sort of a open planning commissioner?
I think that consistency is kind of nice.
Yeah.
We're struggling to get someone that can.
Yeah, and, and any of you can attend the meetings and.
Right.
Provide input.
That's just what I was going to suggest. I mean, I would, I would really encourage anybody, all of you, to try to make those meetings. But yeah, it'd be nice to have somebody, because it is, if you're not, if we were rotating positions, it would be difficult to kind of keep track of what's going on.
I think consultants do a really wonderful job of really meeting after meeting.
The more background you've got in it, the, the better the experience.
So I guess I would, I guess we could open it up or just send a note to Jimmy and Sheila too, but other, I've, you know, if Ian's interested and has the time, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'd support that. I mean, do we need to like take a vote or how do we want to do this?
You, you could do it that way. Or I'm kind of hearing maybe we want to wait and put it out, too. It's really the will of the commission at this point.
It, it probably doesn't have to be that formal. I, I think it might be a good idea to at least just put it out there as an email and then have everybody respond for sure. Yes, no. Then you have it. And then, then whoever it is, if there is, if there's a toss-up, then I guess we might have to vote, but, I mean, more than one person, but I, my sense is it probably won't be. But I do want to make sure that the other commissioners are aware.
Okay, are you? Well, okay, let's do that. But I think for sure by the 24th, we should make a decision, because it is fast and furious and, yeah.
They meet next, next Thursday. It's almost every Thursday they're meeting, but the next formal meeting is next Thursday at Public Works Department at 6:30.
Again at Public Works again?
It's again at the Public Works, yep.
Okay. And one question. Ian, are you going to be, are you 50th and France Small Area Plan Chair? Okay, just, just asking. Okay.
Yeah, so that's something to think about. That'll be ratcheting up. I believe March, we were talking about kind of getting the notice out, so that might be something that you want to think about, time commitment to that at Southdale at the same time. But, but we'll, we'll hold off.
Okay. All right, so chair and member comments. Any? Commissioner Lee?
I was just thinking that, well, we're just, we're wrapping up 44th and France. We are in the middle of 70th and Cahill and 50th and France is about due. And as a body, we are the Comprehensive Planning Task Force. We just have a standing item here to have a check-in particularly on those small area plans. I know we meet as a group, I don't even know, I want to check when our next meeting is, as the, officially as a CPTF. But within the planning commission, I think it's really good for everyone to understand or know what's happening with those small area plans. They are going to come to the planning commission for their blessing. So in some ways, it helps to understand at what point they are in the process. So, so I'll start, or maybe Jerry, I don't know. Do you want to kind of update? We're just reconvening, so.
Yeah, there, there really isn't any change. We, we have met as a planning commission since our community meeting, which was December 3rd. But we are meeting this Thursday, the work group, and then February is our next second community meeting. So we have been in a lull, you know, over the Christmas holidays, so the last update we have met, met since then, so.
Speak up, speak up. The speak up?
Yes, speak up has been, that's the site, the Dyna City Site, and a message has been posted on that inviting comments from the citizens or those who have, take access to it, to get feedback and people who haven't made the meetings or have points. So we will be monitoring that regularly and make sure that, that the citizen comments coming through that site will be incorporated in our, in our review.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you know, one of the things that came up, and I, after backtracking a little bit, also found out was an issue on 44th and France is, the question request came is, how will you, will you engage the public if they can't attend your, your public outreach meetings? How are you going to gather input? So we debated a little bit and considered survey. This was suggested by Chris Socker and Mark Nolan, as well as the consultant, to use the speak up platform as a way of gathering more information. So that actually is going to be part of our documented public engagement as well as the results of it will be aggregated. And I, I think it's a great tool. I think it's really good because all of our working group members actually go on there and actually read it, so it's pretty clear what the feedback is. Thanks.
Anything else? Did you, I missed the last Southdale. Were you there? Okay, is there anything to talk about that?
Um, not really. I mean, it's, you know, we went over some sketches of kind of just brainstorming what might be over the whole kind of Southdale area, so, and that's kind of continuing with Mick and it's, again, especially now that we're including kind of the southern piece that kind of goes off to the west and that whole area, I mean, it makes much more sense now to me in terms of looking holistically at the whole Southdale region. It just keeps expanding and that makes sense, because before it was really so narrow in our focus that really need to look at the whole area.
If I could, there's two takeaways I thought from it. One of them is that the promenade is certainly a prominent design feature and the city has an enormous investment in it, but it's also hidden from the world. And one of the efforts is to rediscover some of the effort that's already been put there. The other piece was to say that if the promenade is central to the design of the Southdale area, then so is France and York. And instead of them being, they used to be called seams or transition strips, they are really the heart. That's where the activity occurs. The activity occurs along the street. What happens beyond the street is private property, but what happens on the street is public realm. And that's where the, the interest, the activity, the focus needs to be. And I think we saw that in the project that we looked at tonight, reflected what happens on Hazleton, what happens on the streets, certainly north-south more important than east-west. That was one piece. And the other piece in looking at industrial park.
Pentagon.
Looking at Pentagon, recognizing the water issue, the Pentagon and the water issue that begins to focus Centennial Lakes and to try to find a way to link those two and to try to say, instead of it being a restraint, it's an opportunity.
Right.
And what might that water be and how might it turn back to the, to the design to become a central feature that does more than one thing, handles the water instead of floods the building, makes the water an amenity instead of a difficulty, makes it visible instead of underground and hidden and spongy and soft. So what, what can that be? So I think those are interesting highlights that will go somewhere.
And that reminds me of what John said, too, you know, the idea of, you know, like on York and France of how important they are and to carry a theme, you know, the comparison we kind of talked about was, you know, like Third Avenue versus Fifth Avenue in Manhattan, you know, that, if there's a, if we can define a theme for those north-south corridors and kind of carry that through, that will help us and help developers in terms, when they come in, of trying to figure out what it is that we're looking for in those areas. So that's one thing we're playing with right now.
So did they, did they actually expand the boundary of the Southdale area plan out? Is it, does it include Pentagon Park?
Yeah, so I could, you know, we've talked about, really for the two, three years we've been studying this area, how does Pentagon Park fit into this? So we thought, you know, this, it's part of the comprehensive plan, so we kind of showed how, how those would be knitted together. So, yeah, we did the rollout of the paper and we did the backwards L to include Pentagon Park.
So what's that mean in terms of the plan being completed? Is there a completion date? Or is it no longer the Greater Southdale Area Plan or?
Well, we're, we're talking it as, it's not really a small area plan, but more of a district.
Precinct.
Precinct, that's right, precinct. So it's all going to be tied together, you know, we need, we need to create a land use map for the entire city. So Pentagon Park, not sure the land uses are going to change, but just showing how those will be connected.
Again, I'm sort of just still wondering, is there going to be some conclusion on the Greater Southdale Plan? Because obviously, we continue to get proposals for this and even though I really liked that one, it would be nice to have the plan and understand, what did we conclusively say? I know we, we have that ability to throw this back to Mick and give his instantaneous blessing or not, but I think in, in some ways, we do need some kind of summary or plan for, for Southdale. What, what is it that we're trying to achieve there? I guess I understand that it's linked to Pentagon Park, but right now, the immediate need is there. So would hope that there would be some plan to have a deadline for that as well as a review process, because obviously it goes through the committee, back to Planning Commission, City Council. And hopefully, because we're, we're un-linking ours from 44th and France, they're all on their own timetables. So we did clarify that with BCO Associates that, no, it's not, here's all your three small area plans and here's your comp plan update. They're, they are trying to have these conclude and get the feedback so that it can be incorporated into the comp plan.
We're going to, the representatives from the Southdale Area Work Group will be coming to the planning commission. Is it the 24th? Have they figured, there's a lot going on on the 24th. But.
Yeah, we may have to.
So they will be presenting kind of an update. Yeah, 24th?
See if they can put a date on the books for when that plan, for that summer.
Oh, yeah, so that is on the, that's, it's in that October, November range.
Yeah, we, there's still some work to do.
Ultimately, we, we would like to get everything wrapped up. Ultimately, we would like to get everything wrapped up by the end of the year, but as we've talked about, we don't want to rush things if things come up, but that's still our goal, is to finish by the end of the year.
Are you seeing a lot of proposals with that comp plan deadline?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if we've talked about this here, but the Met Council has told us they will not consider any comprehensive plan updates after June 30th, updates to our 2008 plan. So after that date, we can't consider any comprehensive plan amendments until we finish our 2018 update. So developers are aware of that, and so we may see a few here before June 30th.
Was there a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the meeting is ended. I'm supposed to formally announce it and I already forgot what I was supposed to say. Meeting is concluded.